All right, we'll come back to order with a roll call from our city clerk Kathy Valdez.
The record should reflect that all members are present.
Our city attorney Walter Chung will bring us out of closed session.
The city council took no reportable action in closed session today.
And council member O'Donnell will lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening.
Please stand if you're able and remove your hats. You may begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our city clerk Kathy Valdez has some procedural items. Kathy, would you turn my mic up a little bit?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District ordinance 2006-1. I would like to remind everyone that the Vista Municipal Code requires members of the public to observe order and decorum at the meeting and to conduct themselves in a courteous manner. The ordinance was adopted to allow for public input and to facilitate city business without disruption in the meeting. Applause is appropriate for items listed under the presentation portion of the agenda only. Students wishing to receive credit for attending this evening's meeting must stay for a minimum of one hour. However, we ask that you stay for the completion of an item rather than leaving in the middle of a discussion. When you are ready to leave, you may ask one of the staff members at the back of the room to sign your paper. Thank you.
To speak on an item on tonight's agenda, please fill out the speaker slip with the number of the item you'd like to speak on and give it to the clerk's secretary staff here at the dice. Speaker slips are available on the table just outside the council chambers. For members of the public participating via Zoom, you may use the raise your hand feature to indicate that you'd like to speak or press star nine on your phone. We will announce when to raise your hand to indicate you'd like to make a comment on the specific item being discussed. Speakers will each have three minutes this evening to address the city council. Now we'll go to city manager John Conley for approval of tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. No changes to this evening's agenda.
Okay, we have two presentations this evening. I'd like to invite my council members to join me. The lectern for the first presentation.
All right, our first presentation is one proclaiming September 17th through to the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in the City of Vista. Here to accept this proclamation is Jaclyn Berzin, Chair of the Santa Margarita Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution 250 Committee. Is Jaclyn here? And all of your fellow DAR members, please come forward. Look at this beautiful poster that we got here. That's gorgeous. Okay, our proclamation reads, whereas September 17th, 2025 commemorates the 238th anniversary of the signing of the United States Constitution by the delegates at the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia, whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this foundational document and its enduring significance and to commemorate its anniversary through patriotic observances. And whereas in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to set aside September 13th to the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week, and that resolution was adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law in August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And whereas Public Law 915 designates the annual observance of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and mandates a proclamation by the President of the United States to that effect each year. Now therefore, I, as the mayor of the City of Vista and the members of the council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week in the City of Vista. And we urge all citizens to reaffirm the ideals envisioned by the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us by the Constitution, our guardian, the guardian of our liberties, always remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Thank you very much, ladies, for being with us. Come right here and we'll take a little picture. Okay, and now I'd like to invite our friend Joe Gabalden, San Diego Gas and Electric Senior Public Affairs Manager, to provide a presentation regarding wildfire safety and public power safety shut-off. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and City Council staff, members of the community and all your future leaders in the room. Really excited to be here tonight to give the community an update about our efforts to keep the community safe, to share some information about what we see coming ahead, and also to talk a little bit about ongoing collaboration in support of communities. In, let's see here, I've got my slide. There we go. So so far, we've had some great years of a lot of rain over the last couple, two years or so, and it's really allowed the vegetation in the back countries to grow and as well in the urban areas as well. But things have stopped and we continue now to see some dry periods for quite a while now. Areas of drought are increasing. Last year, drought conditions totaled 22% in the western US and 1% of the community was rated moderate drought or higher in the state. This year, the drought conditions have increased. The western US is 64% designated as moderate drought or higher, and California has also increased to 39% designated moderate drought or higher. This year's fire season outlook has been trending towards an above-normal fire potential. We've seen lots of spot fires in the region. Many people are tuning in to watch duty and kind of hearing about some of those fires that are going on, and certainly with our great resources of local public safety fire officials and staff. Relative to fuel moisture, we're also seeing that to be drier as the summer continues to go. The moisture from the monsoons have been helpful, but again, that is, you know, going to end eventually. And around fall, we do expect elevated conditions in the inland areas. And, you know, it's built on information that comes to the Weather Service from SDGNE's team of meteorologists and other universities. So a little bit of information about our public safety power shut-off protocols.
Joe?
Yes?
I'm gonna ask our staff to go out into the lobby and ask all the people having conversations in the lobby, take their conversations outside of the building because they're disrupting the meeting.
Thank you.
Maybe Chief, maybe you could, maybe our two fire chiefs there would help out and I think Imelda might need a hand. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. For the decision-making criteria that we go through.
Thank you, Chief Ford. Thank you, Joe.
You bet.
Make sure we can hear you.
Thank you. We're excited, again, to kind of peel back layers in terms of decision-making that's made by SDGNE as we go into public safety, the potential for public safety power shut-offs. We have a leadership team that has really been engaged in making those critical decisions as a last defense for wildfire during these extreme weather conditions that we're having. Some of the factors that go into the decision include support from, information from National Weather Service, our own meteorologists providing information. SDGNE also has about 223 weather stations in the back country that are helping us register temperature, moisture, and wind speeds, and those are done in 10-minute cycles. In addition, we also look at wildfire activity in the region, how resources are available and communication. But really, one of the things that makes it special with SDGNE's protocol is we rely on boots on the ground, right? Do we have our technicians, our field crews out there in the field reporting back to our incident command on the weather conditions? Are we seeing branches flying sideways, umbrellas and that kind of thing lifting off? So, you know, again, just some of the protocol that we use to make that decision. The process then is built on the information that we're receiving from meteorologists. It really starts seven to 10 days out before an event. They're starting to see trends in weather and continue to monitor it as we get closer to when the perceived period of focus. And, you know, four to six days out, we're continuing to refine our weather forecast. And then we, as about two or three days out, we start to notify our customers. Hey, we're looking at a potential area while it, you could be affected. We try to communicate so that people can prepare for any sort of changes in their service, but also then to be aware of any sort of fire potential as well. One day out, we're continuing to monitor it, refine it. The messaging that we communicate and is really kind of refined there as the weather event matures. And then we're also able to communicate with the customers before, during the shut-offs. A lot of folks register their cell phones with us. We're able to keep them informed that way. Ultimately, when it's time to, when conditions have subsided, we're able to get crews out to start inspecting, patrolling our, the overhead infrastructure to make sure there's no damage and it's ready to turn on. And then ultimately, once services are restored and the period of concern has passed, then we close our EOC and resume our normal operations. In terms of customer notifications, we provide voice, text, and/or email. We also have an app, PSPS app, that's called SDGE Alerts, and it's a great way to get information about your neighborhood or even other neighborhoods where you have family members or friends to get that information. We're also coordinating with National Weather Service as well as local partners. We provide information through our website, which is sdgetoday.com. And we are also doing in-message, in-community road signs as it gets more severe. But we also want to always encourage folks who may still have their landline on their account to remember to visit sdg.com/newsifications to update your contact information so they can get these notifications. Again, during the actual event, we are sending notifications out to our customers about the, about these events as they get tighter, as the areas and the communities that are affected, but also then what sort of resources are available in several areas. We're able to open up community resource centers to provide instant information. We've done it up the road at the Fallbrook County Library, for example. They've been impacted by PSPS events in the past. And so we have staff out there to answer questions, talk about restoration times, but more importantly, provide support whether it's charging for their mobile phones and that kind of thing, as well as water and some refreshments. Our partnerships has really been one of the highlights in terms of what I've been involved with personally and working with my colleagues. 2017, I joined the company. We started rounds with the public safety power shut-offs, and we went into an outreach activity afterwards. And we really wanted to hear from our customers, what else could we be doing? And so a lot of these activities and the partnership with 211 San Diego, for example, really came out of that feedback process from, we heard from our customers. And so lots of great partnerships. If folks, you know, 211 San Diego is a great resource if people have questions, if they're impacted. And lastly, we do a lot of efforts to mitigate public safety power shut-offs. We explore customer resiliency with microgrids in the back country, connecting key facilities together that might be able to serve the community even when power is off to the neighborhoods around that area. We also do grid hardening efforts, which includes our pole, pole replacement programs. Sometimes you'll see them with, the old wood comes out and the red steel, it's kind of like a rust-colored steel pole goes in. Those poles are stronger to buffer against the wind. They also support wider arms and heavier cross lines. Again, trying to do those things that can reduce potential for fires in the back country. We also, like I said, we have weather stations and, you know, we're able to turn it up even further and give those 30-second reads. Also, we use AI to help us prepare, help us analyze facilities and performance and risk. So it's something where we really work to stay on the cutting edge of this stuff. Our leadership is, is great to work with. We always come out of these very difficult events. You have 12-hour shifts and all that, but coming out of it, they're always encouraging the team and themselves to ask the question, what else could we be doing? And so it's very inspirational. So with that, that is my question or my comments. I do want to point out that on September, Saturday, September 27th, we will be hosting a wildfire safety fair at the Antique Gas and Steam Engine Museum here in town. That is going to be from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And I've distributed flyers on that as well as flyers on ways to prepare for public safety power shut-offs, both in English and in Spanish.
Thank you very much. And I see some of the members of the council have questions for you. Start with Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Well, thank you, Joe, for being here. And more of a comment to just say thank you to SDGNE for, you know, taking these steps to prevent fires and for also keeping a meteorologist on your team. That's a, you know, becomes a very big asset for our community so that we can be prepared. So I encourage everyone to go to sdgne.com-notifications, right? Because I know I get the texts when we do have a shut-off, and I want everyone else to get the notifications when there is an emergency shut-off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Contreras.
Yeah, I have a little bit more of a technical question. So when we're looking at grid hardening, this is something that I've brought up in a council discussion with our fire chief. You know, it's no surprise that the northeastern part of Vista is where we have seen fire, a lot of fire activity over there coming from Gopher Canyon, crossing into Vista. And, you know, with the Lilac Fire, we were really thankful to the winds that they changed. I live, you know, in a more urban part of the city and I was, you know, one or two streets away from mandatory evacuation. So it's a really big concern. So when we're looking at grid hardening, is there any kind of plan or consideration for that northeastern part of Vista? Because we're talking about older homes and nothing's undergrounded over there.
Right. You know, we look at a risk model to You know, we look at a risk model to see what, which circuits and communities are at greatest risk for these fires. Obviously, we want to make sure that we're working closely with local fire staff and resources, but the risk modeling that we've seen so far has really encouraged us to look at those communities that are the west side of the major hills in the back country. The winds come down those hillsides with great speed, and that really creates a higher risk. The community at large, certainly, we have lots of different pockets, but the risk modeling helps us prioritize where the funding going, where the funding is going. I could certainly go back and look at, to see if there's any plans here for the northeast corner of the community.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to see that, even if it's in the Fire Protection District and not in Vista proper, but the whole Gopher Canyon to the northern part of Vista is a big concern.
Okay.
And just curious if any of this will feed into this idea of like parametric insurance with the additional grid hardening? There's different ways that people are looking at, you know, having insurance since a lot of folks are losing their insurance. So some of these reduction of risk factors can really help folks. So is there, are you aware of any conversations that SDGNE is having when it comes to parametric insurance?
I'm not familiar with any sort of discussions with, you know, the State Insurance Commissioner and what they're doing. We work to answer any questions they may have, but at this time, there's not really been a connection or nexus to local public safety power shut-offs and reduce fire risk that might impact or benefit the insurance policyholder. So nothing yet, but...
Yeah. Curious to see who can, you know, bring that connection about if there is a connection there. I had the opportunity in a different capacity to, you know, have an expert from Ricardo Lara, the Insurance Commissioner's Office, talk about fire risk, and this is something that they brought up. So I'm just curious, you know, if that's, I don't think it's, there's a lot of public knowledge on it, but I think that there's a lot of different entities that can work together to help reduce fire risk, which then in turn could really help folks obtain a policy that, not only that could be obtained, but that is financially feasible for folks. So I would love to hear a little bit more information on that and definitely want to see, you know, what we can do as a city to work with SDGNE or other partners, including Fire Protection District, the county, the state, so that we could really start undergrounding these utility lines that, you know, that's going to be the best way to safeguard from fire. And potentially, you know, when things are undergrounded, is there still a shut-off? If the infrastructure is not...
In the rare case, in the rare case that there's a, the potential for impact of the transmission grid as well, you do have sections that might have to turn off and ultimately affect communities that because of the way their community is fed, they could be shut-off even though they might not have the winds. So the strategic undergrounding that we've done in the back country, in January, we had some of the most extreme winds that we've ever had. Some of those undergrounded areas were still shut-off because of the transmission system that serves them was also threatened by the weather.
Yeah, okay. Fantastic. It looks like there's a lot that SDGNE is doing, but a ton more that it can be doing with the record profits it has. So I look forward to hearing a little bit more about that and would love to really tackle this issue because Vista is not simply urban. It really does, our sphere of influence does have that, a little bit of the back country. But thank you so much for coming.
My pleasure.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Thank you for your presentation, and I actually just wanted to follow up on the comments that were just made because those are my only questions. If we're doing any coordinated effort with the City of Vista, Fire Protection District, Cal Fire, because my insurance rate went up double for my homeowner's insurance, and we live right, right on the cusp of the fire map in Vista, and so are in one of the pockets in Vista that has one. And so I'm just curious if we're sharing that information. I mean, I think you said you had 200-plus monitoring systems, and I think that would go a long way if insurance companies are aware of that, because then it shows that we're not only mitigating fire through technology, but if there's other processes such as mitigation through removing shrubs and brush and other fuels that could ignite and spread fire, I think it goes a long way. And I think it's to the point that Councilmember Contreras just made, the more effort that we're making to share this information and get it in the hands of homeowner's insurance or whoever is insuring different properties, it could go a long way in reducing those rates. Because I think right now, what you're seeing is California's been a matchbox for the last five years, probably longer than that, but we've really noticed it more in probably the last five years, and insurance rates are going up statewide. And this is not an issue that is unique to SDGNE, it's all across the... But if we can continue to share that information even with our own fire agency here, because I know that we've done a lot for mitigation of fire, I think it'd go a long way to helping our residents lower, lower their insurance rates.
Okay. Yes, I'll be following up with our Sacramento team and see how they're collaborating. I know we've participated in a couple of events that the Commissioner Lara has done in the back country and been there to educate and inform folks about our services and what we're up to, so.
And I will say, from an elected position, if there's phone calls we need to make, that I need to make, whatever you need from me, if it's going to help out our residents, I will do it in a heartbeat. So just let me know what I can do.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that's going to bring us to our oral communications opportunity. Any member of the public may address the Council on Agency-related Matters, not on the agenda, by requesting to speak during this section of the agenda. If you're participating via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or press star nine now if you'd like to speak. The number of speakers heard during this segment is limited to 10. Any remaining speakers will be heard under the second oral communications item. Do we have any requests to speak under oral communications? Oh, this is not the first D1. No, got it. Okay. We have Roxanne, is it Labi, Labi? Or Lab? You have to tell me what the right way.
I'm fine.
How is it said?
I'm here about, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, but about the...
You have to start by telling me what the correct pronunciation was.
It's, I, we say Labi, but the French way is La Baye.
Oh, La Baye.
But we go by Labi.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I like to speak about the roundabouts on North and on Los Angeles. I know their purpose is to slow people down, but it hasn't done it. And I've been in the roundabout when people are just coming from Los Angeles and don't even slow down. And then people stop in them, and I think a lot of the curbs that you have there just seems too much. Then I have an issue with the Melrose, all the berms and the poles that you have there. When you make a turn on some of the homes, those poles are too close to the driveways. Years ago, when it was only two lanes, in every intersection, it's easy to pull over and take a right. When you make three lanes, it made it hard to do that on the intersection, plus the homes on Melrose, because I have a friend that lives on Melrose. And so they're just way too close to get around them. Another one is on Olive. Everybody is complaining about, it's just the cars are too close to the street. And then when you're coming from like, what is it, the transit center coming, going west, there's a sign that you have that says, "No Stopping," and the sign points west. So there's the broken lines to make your right, to make a right on Melrose, but the cars are parked right after that, so you really can't make a right until you go around them, and it's the solid lines. So that's kind of a hazard, I think. And I know there's a lot of lanes that have parking that have been taken on Melrose and everything on the east side, and I think it's created a hazard there also. But the thing I think is the best, and you never, they never did it, was between Copper and Olive, where you have the parking for all the condos, and the bike lane is really wide, so it's really kind of nice, because I've parked there and got it out of my car, and, you know, it's safe that no one's going to take off your door. But yeah, I think the berms and all that on Melrose causes a hazard during the really busy times, because if there's an emergency vehicle going, there's no way to pull over to the right. So I don't know if anything will be done about it, but a lot of the things, it's, I think it's not good. My cousin gets on next door, and there's a lot of complaints, but of course, they probably don't...
Thank you very much, Ms. La Baye. And I do know that we're going to be taking a look at some of those flexible posts that are in close proximity to driveways. So hopefully you'll see some improvement there. Okay. Yes, thank you. Yes.
If I have a question to make a point?
Sure.
Thank you so much. I have brought this up to the city. I think you're talking about the intersection of Olive and North Melrose that's close to the SDGNE property that's vacant. Mr. Conley, I've brought this up before, that folks are always parking there, and it makes it very difficult for people to make a right-hand turn. I think instead of having the no parking sign that no one is following, we should probably just paint it red.
[inaudible]
Right, right. And everybody's stopping. Yeah. Yeah, they're parked there. Okay. I appreciate you bringing that up to our attention. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That'll bring us to our consent counter, the recommendations on the... Oh, I'm sorry, we have some more comments that have just arrived via Zoom. We will start with Terri Ann Skelly, followed by Peggy Walker, followed by Madison Rapp. Terri Ann Skelly.
Good evening, Vista City Council, Mayor Franklin. My name is Terri Ann Skelly. I'm here as a parent and a community volunteer. One of the youth programs in the Vista School District that is important to me is the Start Smart program, provided to high school students and their parents by the sheriff. The program aims to educate teen drivers and their parents on the dangers of distracted, drunk, or drug impaired driving. Alcohol and drug use are a nationwide roadway safety concern as most, as almost one in three traffic deaths involve an impaired driver. Information from the California Department of Traffic Safety, the OTS, regarding marijuana impaired driving by young adults shows that it is increasing in communities that permit marijuana stores. Their studies show that driving while under the influence of marijuana negatively impacts attentiveness, perception of time, and memory. Impaired memory can affect the ability to drive from past driving experiences, especially in emergency situations. Marijuana impaired drivers react slower to traffic lights and unexpected obstacles and are less aware of their actual speed. Studies show that drivers with only a small amount of THC in their blood can feel the effects and increase their risk of getting into a crash by 25 to 35%. Perhaps it's time for a Vista City Council to take a closer look at marijuana businesses' impact on the health and safety of our city's residents. Thank you for hearing my concerns this evening.
Peggy Walker, followed by Madison Rapp, followed by Becky Rapp. Peggy Walker.
Hi, good evening, and thank you. As a youth mentor and public health practitioner, I'm here because I'm deeply concerned about the rapid growth of marijuana businesses in our community. September is National Recovery Month, highlighting the recovery from substance use and mental health disorders is possible with the right resources. The Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, which you may know as SAMSA, reminds us this observation is also called to prevention, asking whether we're doing enough to prevent substance use in our neighborhoods. High potency THC products, both legal and illegal, are fueling troubling increases in cannabis use disorder, psychosis, anxiety, depression, and suicide among those under 25. Please just look to the data. Illegal products, often marketed to youth and combined with alcohol, nicotine, and other intoxicants, are flooding our retail outlets, and they worsen the problem. Together, permitted and illegal products normalize marijuana use, making access easier, recovery harder, and community health more at risk. Yet, recovery services are stretched thin and don't meet demand. So prevention is critical, given the high treatment costs of marijuana and other drug use, mental health impacts, and links to homelessness. Research shows that prevention to work, that prevention does work, and I wanted to let you know that psychosis rates, for example, are 67% lower in jurisdictions that do not permit marijuana. This is a powerful sign that policy choices matter. It may be time to reconsider the city's current approach to marijuana and ensure we are prioritizing prevention, protecting youth, and safeguarding community health. Thank you so much for your time.
Madison Rapp, followed by Becky Rapp, followed by Megan Stewart. Madison Rapp.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I want to raise a concern about how the expansion of cannabis businesses in Vista connects directly to our community's housing instability. As cannabis becomes more available, use is shifting from occasional to daily for many residents. While often marketed as harmless, research and lived experience show that regular cannabis use can impair judgment, reduce motivation, and affect memory and decision-making. For those already living paycheck to paycheck, these impacts can mean missed work, lost jobs, and ultimately, the inability to pay rent. The most vulnerable to homelessness are also those most affected by substance use. When impaired judgment is layered onto financial strain, families can quickly be pushed over the edge into losing their housing. And once unhoused, substance dependency often deepens, making it even harder to recover stability. Vista has made important strides in housing support, but housing alone will not solve this issue if we ignore the role of drugs. Expanding access to marijuana without stronger safeguards risks accelerating the very problems we are trying to solve. If we want homelessness to be rare, brief, and nonrecurring, we must address housing and addiction prevention together. I urge the council to ensure that as dispensaries increase in our city, there are parallel investments in substance use education, prevention, and treatment. Integrating these supports is essential if we want to keep people not only housed, but safe and thriving in Vista. Thank you.
Becky Rapp, followed by Megan Stewart. Becky Rapp.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin and councilmembers. My name is Becky Rapp, and today I'd like to draw your attention and acknowledgement to September, a suicide prevention and awareness month, a time when we recommit ourselves to protecting lives, supporting families, and breaking the silence around mental health struggles. I want to highlight the important work of an organization titled Every Brain Matters, a community dedicated to sharing critical public health information about how marijuana use impacts mental health, especially among our young people. Too often, marijuana is portrayed as harmless, yet the science is telling, it's telling us a very different story. High potency products are strongly associated with anxiety, depression, psychosis, and tragically increased suicide risk among youth and young adults. Suicide is now the second-leading cause of death for people ages 15 to 24, and when we ignore the role of substances like marijuana, we miss a vital piece of prevention. Every Brain Matters helps families, educators, and policymakers see the full picture, connecting the dots between brain health, substance use, and suicide. Prevention starts with education. It means ensuring parents know the risks, young people hear the truth, and decision-makers prioritize mental health over marijuana profits. Suicide is preventable, but only if we address all contributing factors, including substance use. This month, as we honor lives lost and strengthen our commitment to saving others, I urge us all to recognize groups like Every Brain Matters and to those who speak openly about marijuana's mental health risks. Thank you.
Megan Stewart.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. World Suicide Prevention Day is...
World Suicide Prevention Day is recognized globally tomorrow on September 10th, and I'd like to take a moment today to highlight its importance for our community. This week gives us an opportunity to pause, reflect, and recommit ourselves to protecting the mental health and well-being of our young people. Here in Vista, this conversation feels especially urgent as we are seeing the real-life consequences that early marijuana use is having on adolescents as rates of depression, anxiety, psychosis, and suicide only continue to rise. Research from Columbia University published in JAMA Open Network found that teens who use marijuana are two to four times more likely to develop psychiatric disorders, including depression and suicidality, than their peers who do not use marijuana. Even casual youth without signs of addiction was strongly tied to poor academic performance, risky behavior, and worsening mental health. Adolescents' brains are still developing, making them especially vulnerable. A different study showed that youth with a history of marijuana use have at least a 50% higher likelihood of developing suicidality in adulthood. When we talk about suicide prevention, addressing underage marijuana use must be part of the conversation. As we approach World Suicide Prevention Day, let us honor those we have lost by confronting the misperception that marijuana is harmless, by supporting education and prevention, and by committing to policies that truly safeguard our youth. Thank you.
Okay, that'll bring us the end of our oral communications opportunity. We'll now close the opportunity for public, uh, common oral communications during this meeting of the council. That'll bring us to our consent calendar. The motions against the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary by using the raise their hand feature on Zoom or by pressing star nine. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. We have 11 consent items this evening, and item C6, speed hump removal at 972 Euclidus, has been removed by member of the public. Entertain a motion for the balance. Councilmember Fox.
I'd like to move to pass the, uh, remaining portions of the consent calendar, and I'd like to recuse myself on item C8.
Okay, the record will reflect that councilmember Fox is recused on item C8.
And I'll second the balance of the consent calendar.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Chung, do we need a separate vote for the... Or just good enough to let the record reflect his recusal? Okay. All right. Very good. Please cast your votes. That item passes unanimously, that motion passes unanimously. That'll bring us to the consideration of item C... Oh, and for the record, uh, C8 passes with, uh, four yes votes and one, uh, recusal. Uh, that'll bring us to item C6, and we'll begin with a public comment on that item from Brent Ayala.
Good evening, Mayor Franklin and council members. So, um...
If you speak right into the microphone, we'll hear you best.
I am a resident and homeowner near 972 Euclidus Avenue, and I am hoping to retain not only the speed bump at 972, but also the rest of our speed bumps down Euclidus Avenue. And as you may or may not know, this traffic calming device has been a critical safety measure for not just our neighborhood, but also the community as a whole. And I'm deeply concerned that its removal is being considered based on the complaint of a single or a few individuals. So, our street is a main thoroughfare for, uh, families walking to the elementary school in the... If you don't know, uh, Boe Bier, now, you know, formerly Beaumont Elementary School is right down the street, and that is a main thoroughfare for families walking to and from school. It's also, uh, an area where there's a lot of cycling, uh, people jogging, running, walking dogs, all the things that families do, and there are a lot of children in the area. And there aren't sidewalks, so you are primarily walking, you know, on the side of the street. And the traffic calming devices that were put in have had a very positive effect and have slowed traffic significantly. And I think they have, uh, helped a lot of people feel a lot safer and more comfortable in the area. And I feel like, maybe it's just me, but my observation has been it seems like a lot more people are out and about and using that thoroughfare, which before, uh, was a bit, you know, precarious. Now, um, originally, when we wanted the speed humps put in, it wasn't just preventative, it was in a direct response to, uh, documented history of dangerous speeding and incidents on our street, uh, including, um, directly across from 972 at 949, 973, and 1001 Euclidus Avenue, as well as 1040 Crescent, which is on the backside of that. Um, there was a lot of property damage sustained from multiple incidents, um, you know, hitting mailboxes, landscaping, fencing, and such. And, uh, so it was sort of a, something that was in response to those incidents, and since then, we have not seen incidents like that. There might have been one, but other than that, I mean, we've seen, you know, as opposed to a whole bunch of them, you know, we've, we've seen a significant decline in both speeding and actual incidents on the, in the neighborhood. And, uh, you know, I, I respectfully urge the council to evaluate, you know, this matter, um, by giving greater weight to the tangible safety of the many, particularly our children and vulnerable road users, over the subjective inconvenience of one or a few. The city has, I thought, made a wise disinvestment in installing the infrastructure that is now in place, and removing it would be a waste of taxpayer funds and ignore the data and community need that justified its first, the placement of it in the first place. So, that's why I'm here, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Hassan, and you want to give us a background on this item?
Good evening, mayor and council. Sam Hassan, and city traffic engineer. Uh, this speed hump was installed, um, as part of the first round of, uh, speed humps that was, uh, directed by the city council on Euclidus Avenue. And, uh, we've installed several of them, and this one is particularly at 972 Euclidus Avenue. And if thus, if this speed hump was to be removed in the space in between the next stop sign, which is about 400 feet to the east of the speed hump, and the next speed hump to the west would be about 1,000, uh, or 1,100 feet without any speed control.
Was there a petition from residents to remove the speed hump? Whose idea was it to bring this forward to remove it?
Yes, residents sub, around the speed hump submitted a petition of six, with, uh, six signatures from the immediate, uh, properties around the speed hump.
How many signatures, uh, did we have when we put these in?
So, th- this was, again, part of the first group of speed humps that was installed in the direction of the city council. So, it was before the latest, uh, update to the speed hump policy. It did not go through the petition.
We did not have a petition from the neighbors to put these in?
No.
Okay. Uh, and we have six that want to take them out, and, uh, we have another speaker on this item. Let's, uh, hear from Jerome, I think it's Jerome Case. Am I getting that right?
Uh, thanks for, uh, letting me speak here. I'm a neighbor of Brent's. I live, uh, just up the hill from him. The speed bump is ju, located just directly down. I'm also a father of two, uh, five and a nine-year-old. And since the speed bumps have gone in, we've noticed a drastic change in the speed that the people travel down the hill. I originally signed the petition in order to help the, uh, neighbor who wanted it off because it's directly in front of his house and it makes a lot of noise. But after having my kids out front, I decided I want it there. So, I'd like to keep it if possible, so, thank you.
You're withdrawing your name from the removal petition?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, seeing no member of the council willing to make a motion to adopt this item, uh, we'll move forward and the item will fail for lack of, uh, interest of the council to approve it. So that means it'll stay. The speed hump will stay. That's good news, right? You got it. All right. Very good. All right. It, it makes a difference to show up at the council. Thank you. We appreciate it. Glad to hear from you. Yeah. No motion to approve. Okay, that will close out our consent calendar. It'll bring us to our discussion items. We have, the first of two discussion items is regarding speed hump policy updates. If any member of the public wishes to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise their hand feature by pressing star nine or submitting a request to speak card. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. Our traffic engineering division manager, Sam Hassan, will provide the staff report. Oh, uh, let's, uh, we're gonna take a one-minute recess. Students, we're gonna ask, uh, get your papers signed, take your conversations outside the building so we can continue our meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight. We hope you learned something, weren't too bored by it. Thank you very much. Sorry, council member, they, they weren't here to hear us wax eloquent. Okay, good, good call. You got it.
Thanks for coming. Well, ultimately, if the neighbors on the street are happy, then we're happy. That's all we're trying to get to, so. I think you had it all by yourself, but that definitely didn't hurt. The whole petition process?
Hey, thank you. Right? Yeah. Right. He's the, uh, he's the government affairs, uh, guy for the SDGs. Right? Well, hey, thanks for keeping the lights on for us. Well, that, we appreciate that. Thanks for keeping the heat on during the winter. Yep, and our dryers. All right. We're gonna come back to order because we gotta, hopefully not a long discussion or two, but that will be up to the council to decide. Oh, and I see we're still missing the deputy mayor. All right. We'll just ask everybody to take their conversations outside the building out into the beautiful September evening. Thank you very much for coming to speak. Wherever Chief Washington and Chief Ford went, thank you again for help with the crowd. We appreciate that. I appreciate that. Sorry to call you in auxiliary service there. We're on item D1, speed hump discussion, and I think the deputy mayor is able to hear us through the speaker in the back room. Though we do need to get a speaker in the kitchen. How can we do that? Can you write that down? I got a second. We don't need to make a formal motion. Just wire a speaker up to the other speaker. Yes. I think that's within the city manager's existing authority. If the, if the door's open, you can hear it, but... Yeah, we need a little softer speaker in the kitchen. Okay, since, since we assume our colleague can hear us in the anteroom, uh, Mr. Mayor, please proceed.
Good evening. I'll, we'll give the presentation on the speed hump policy update. And the city council has recently discussed updating the speed hump policy to enhance the petition requirement and to prioritize approved speed hump projects. In accordance with city council direction, staff updated the speed hump policy as detailed below. Number one, council requested to raise the neighborhood, uh, approval threshold for speed humps to 60%. So staff updated the policy accordingly. Number two is to establish a rolling application approval period for petitions. Staff recommends keeping the window for receiving requests for speed humps from the public open all year. However, for locations that meet the screening criteria and the 60% petition threshold, staff recommends taking those locations to the traffic commission and city council for approval biannually in two groups. So the first group would be a traffic commission in May, November, and, uh, I'm sorry, traffic commission, uh, in May and city council in June, and the second group would be traffic commission in November and city council in December. Prioritization process for locations that go through the entire process and are approved by the city council, staff recommends a quantitative prioritization system to be used in installation of speed humps as funding allows. And this table shows the criteria that, uh, staff recommends. So the first one is traffic volumes, and it's a range. So if it's above 5,000, uh, vehicles per day, there's five points. If it's 3,000 to 4,000, um, 999, it's four points. If it's 1,000 to 2,000, 999, three points, and below 1,000 vehicles a day is two points. Traffic speeds, which is measured, uh, by the 85th percentile speed in miles an hour. If it's more than 10 miles an hour above the speed limit, the location gets five points. If it's, uh, 69 mile an hour, uh, mi, mi, miles an hour above the speed limit, then it's four points. And if it's three to five, two points, and two miles per hour or less, zero points. And accidents, for every accident the location has, it gets one point. Proximity to schools or commercial centers, one point within, um, i- if the location's within 600 feet of a school or a commercial center. Then presence of sidewalks, if there are no sidewalks on either side of the street, then the location gets one point.
Sorry, just, how far back are we addressing the accidents in the area? Is it like since 1963? Or like a five-year period?
Five-year period, yes.
Thank you.
And then, uh, since the speed hump policy is being updated, staff suggests the following revisions based on staff's use of the policy over the past two years. Uh, number one is add in reference to the emergency response roadmap that was recently created by the fire department and approved by the city council. Number two, change in the word shell to show in the statement, uh, restricting the installation of speed humps on streets scheduled for resurfacing since these two activities can be coordinated. Number three is add in an evaluation criterion to the checklist that would disqualify oscillated, isolated blocks along continuous streets or short, uh, or cul-de-sacs that are less than 800 feet from further consideration. Then this restriction is already in the council policy, it just needs to be added to the checklist. Number four is clarifying the stage of the speed hump evaluation process when the traffic speed and volume data are collected by staff. Currently, the policy puts that step after the petition. However, we normally do that at the beginning of the process, uh, because this data is needed for the initial screening. Number five, removing the requirement for a resident gathering signatures to document on the petition if they are unable to make contact with a specific, uh, address. And the reason is because if the 60% threshold is achieved, uh, that information becomes irrelevant. Number six is removing the restriction of locating speed humps within 200 feet of intersections as there's not a specific technical reason for this restriction. Sometimes it could be beneficial for a speed hump to be near an intersection if there's a specific issue. Number seven is removing the requirement to notify all the residents in the street prior to the installation of the speed humps, since the residents are notified twice during, during the approval process, once before the traffic commission meeting and once before the city council meeting. There was also in the council direction from the June 10th meeting, uh, to add a petition process for stop signs and speed tables, and those two devices already have a detailed petition process in city council policy 600 dash 13, the traffic calming program. I also wanted to shed some light on the implementation procedure for traffic calming and how the process kind of goes from beginning to end. So the first step in the process and the way it begins is with a request from a resident, and usually those requests come in by phone, email, or through our online request system. And that, uh, triggers staff to, uh, use the speed hump policy and traffic common policy to explore options for traffic common for, uh, the requested street. And then, uh, followed, uh, following that, staff discusses the options with the resident. Typically, uh, our most immediately available options are stop signs and speed humps, and we have a conversation with the resident. And we have a conversation with the residents since they might have a specific inclination and they might have talked to neighbors that, you know, there's a preference for one or the other. Then once we decide on an option, we collect data and we begin the evaluation process, whether it's speed humps or stop signs. And then finally, we provide the resident with a map and a petition form to gather required signatures for the selected option. So the recommendation tonight is to adopt a city council resolution, amend in city council policy 600-07, criteria and procedures for installation of speed humps. Thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much for putting this together. This is something that, you know, I was very interested in seeing some updates to. So you kind of went through the policy on and the process on the side of what it would look like for an applicant on the city side. I just want to kind of get some clarification, make sure that, you know, everything's on the same page with everything. So because we have rolling periods, that means we're probably setting specific budgets probably out of year-end fund balance. Is that correct?
Yes, at this point, we don't have sufficient funds in the neighborhood traffic calming account, and so we would be looking at the year-end fund balance to replenish that.
Okay, so council would, you know, in our year-end fund balance, so we're going to set aside $100,000 for speed bumps or humps or traffic calming devices. And then we'd probably split that into two groups for those two different rolling periods. And we would say that we kind of have a budget of this much in each. When someone came in for an applicant, put in an application and went and got the signatures, it would go into that queue for that specific month. It would go to staff to evaluate on, would the scoring happen prior to approval from traffic commission or would it happen after? Because the presentation made it sound like after, but I just was hoping that those criteria would go into the ranking priority process for traffic commission.
Yeah, I think we would do everything upfront. So a request comes in, you know, we'll go through that process that I just described. And if the location meets, get the petition back. And then that's when we do the ranking if there's other locations. So basically, before we take the first group and the, you know, first part of the year to the traffic commission, we'd have that group and we'd have the prioritization.
Beautiful. And then on that side, would we, and we would just be taking the recommendations of the residents there directly without making our own recommendations. You know, on my end, I'd really prefer that what we brought to, that we used our engineering minds, you know, and not the minds of, you know, someone who just sees a problem, you know, to tell us what the solution is to a problem when, you know, we have the experts on staff. So in my mind, we have like a recommendation of what's the minimum viable product that would solve the issue that they're, so if there's a stop sign, say, that would completely solve the issue because it's a short enough segment or something like that, even if they asked for speed humps, I'd hope that we'd, you know, make that recommendation. If they're, if they come and say, you know, this is a really long street, you know, we want 12 speed humps, that maybe we'd say like, you know what, with our policy of four to 700 feet and everything like that, you know, if we go towards the longer period on that because the traffic isn't too bad, you know. This also is very good for, you know, if we're trying to do, get through as much of that priority list as possible. If we, you know, do 12 on one street versus a stop sign, obviously that would change the number of projects that we could do and the number of residents we could potentially help with something like that. So is that how the policy is currently written where we would, we just take the recommendation of the resident immediately? Or would we be able to come up with a plan for that specific traffic calming issue?
Yeah, definitely. The staff really does do the initial evaluation and makes the recommendation, even when we have that, you know, kind of initial conversation after we get the request from the resident. You know, I'm talking to them or, you know, my staff is basically with some background information and kind of making a recommendation, speed humps don't make sense, or maybe the street doesn't even qualify at all, then we'll give another option. Actually, the traffic common policy is written kind of in a progressive manner that, you know, we look at signs, we look at markings, we look at enforcement. So we always go kind of through that. And a lot of the streets, you know, that make it to the, through the process to go to traffic commission, city council have had a long history. They've already had all the signs put in, all the markings, you know, the striping and the enforcement, and they've had an accident history. So to get to that point, a street usually has a long history.
Beautiful. So then when it comes to the traffic commission, then the, it will be presented, here's the projects, the priority list that we see. And at that point, all the residents would have an opportunity to come forward and say like, hey, you guys wrote us a stop sign. I think we really need speed humps. Here's some extenuating circumstances, something that the traffic commission could then, you know, potentially make some alterations to the recommendations.
The traffic commission can always, of course, you know, make recommendations or alternative, you know, I guess, solutions to what staff presents. Typically, by the point we bring it to traffic commission, it will have gone through that process where we vetted the location and we went through the screening criteria for a selected option.
I just want to make sure that residents have at least one, you know, another chance before it gets voted on to voice their opinions.
We always notify all the residents before the traffic commission and city council meetings.
Beautiful. And then that recommendation, you know, that package gets passed through traffic commission and comes to council for final verification. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Beautiful. You know, and I was, I was looking at the criteria and I was thinking of whether or not it made sense to add some sort of budgetary component to the criteria list. But if that's already kind of being taken care of on the staff level and in that prioritization process where we're already trying to minimize the, you know, the necessary expenditures on each item so that we can, you know, do as many as possible, I could see that being adequate. And then lastly, if a project does not get selected, does it stay in the queue for the next round?
Yeah, depends on the funding allow, available. So let's say, you know, we get kind of a slew of locations at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, we had nine out of 10 on the list. Does number 10?
Right.
Okay. Perfect. I think that's, that's all my questions for now. I'm very supportive of the policy as presented, so I'll, I guess I can make a motion to, to take staff recommendations and go with that.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes, thank you for addressing some of the issues that council had. I actually am still in favor of a simple majority moving forward, but whatever. My question is, during the discussion, and I just want to see if this is, because I feel like I didn't see it in here, but we, I had indicated that it's really important for us to have notification of the individuals in our district who are getting, going through all the work of trying to do like a petition, but don't get to that 60% mark. And for that to come to council, is that, does that need to be spelled out in this policy? Like even on the, our weekly update, just to be informed of the ones that didn't make it to the 60% threshold?
So we don't have that in the policy, but of course, we can do that in any way the council would like. If you want us to do it in the weekly update, we can absolutely do that.
Okay, yeah, I think it's appropriate in the weekly update. I don't think it needs to come to, you know, consent calendar or anything like that. But I just want to know, because it's a lot of work for neighbors, one, to even talk to the city. There's like a huge barrier there. So when folks, do you decide to talk to the city about something? I want to make sure that there's, you know, on my end, that I can facilitate any, anything that I possibly can to help them. And on the other side is, you know, once you are talking to your neighbors, that's a whole other difficult situation. And so for folks that get under 60%, but have gone through all these different steps, I understand that as a council member, I could bring that forward and have a discussion with my colleagues, but I won't be able to do that if I don't know. So I definitely want to make sure that those are brought to our attention in the weekly update. And I don't think that I need to even add that as an amendment, but just, I just want to make sure that that is a process that, that will happen. Yeah. And I'll go ahead and second your motion, even though I'm totally against the 60%. I think a simple majority is just fine. That's what we had before and it seems to be working.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any real big questions for you, but do we have any speed bumps anywhere in the city? Outside of shopping centers? Does the city install speed bumps anywhere?
The kind of abrupt, short ones, not on public.
All right, so, so can we please just make sure the signage is correct? Because there's some interchangeable signing that's not actually, I've learned recently it's actually not interchangeable within the verbiage between speed bump and speed hump. So I just want to make sure that's correct. Beyond that, so I just want to understand this conversation that you and councilmember Fox were just having. You do have the authority and the leeway currently, and then I'm hoping within the body of this document, to, even if there's a 60% threshold, suggest a different mechanism for traffic safety to be utilized in that space. Is that correct?
Yeah, so typically, through our initial evaluation and discussion with the resident, we will have arrived at a solution before we say, go get a petition. Although, you know, of course, residents are free to petition at any stage they like. But we typically work, you know, closely with them so that they're not going out there gathering signatures for something that may not work. So we really try to vet, you know, very, I guess thoroughly before we say to somebody, okay, you know, now it's, now it's a good time to gather signatures.
But so say that you bring that information back to the residents and they go, no, I want a speed hump.
It has happened maybe two, three times over the years. It's really not, not frequent, but it has happened.
And in those, in those instances, are you sharing with us staff recommendation that this not be a speed hump, that it be a stop sign despite resident input?
I remember maybe two instances where we have gone to traffic commission, city council with a petition the staff didn't recommend.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, I just, because based on that conversation, I just want to make sure those restrictions weren't currently in place. But if they aren't, then those are all my questions. So thank you. Appreciate the report.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. Item is approved unanimously. Thank you very much for the presentation and staff work. That'll bring us to item D2 regarding a request for proposals for the Wave Water Park. If any member of the public wishes to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise your hand feature by pressing star nine or submitting a request to speak card. Speakers will be called upon after the presentation. And council gave direction for staff to bring this item back. And the discussion is regarding a proposal for the Wave Water Park and for the council to have a conversation on what items they think should be included in a potential RFP and what items they think should be not negotiable. For instance, I have said that for me, it's not negotiable that our student athletes have to continue to have access, that the schools continue to have to have the access that they have now for athletic programs, including our Stars Water Polo. I don't know if that's who joined us back here. But we want to make sure that all of the parents and kids that are enjoying the wave now for team sports and athletics continue to have the same access. That's very important. Also important, I think, to the whole council is that we maintain an affordable ticket price for Vista families. You know, I suggested a few years ago that we have a resident price for the wave and the council agreed with me and we created a resident discount. I noticed that it costs about $250 to play around the golf at the City of San Diego-owned Torrey Pines Golf Course, where a resident can play golf there for, I think it's $82 or 65 or something, really affordable if you live in the City of San Diego because the people of San Diego own that golf course and so they're entitled to use it at a better rate. But the, the dollars that come from other users who are outside the City of San Diego who pay a premium to use that product, they subsidize the operation of the golf course. And I think that Torrey Pines is a fine example because what is Torrey Pines fundamentally but a golf course? People are willing to pay substantially more to play at that golf course than they are elsewhere. Both are golf courses. I mean, for example, we have a municipal golf course at our neighbor to the west here, a fine course, but doesn't command the same price. They're, they're both in coastal areas. One doesn't have an ocean view. I get it. No, 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 hold it. Don't interrupt me. No, no, but the point is there's demand for one, okay? If it wasn't well-maintained and operated, council member, then the demand wouldn't be the same. Let them stop maintaining it and you see what people are willing to pay for it if they stop watering the fairways. The point is proper maintenance, yes, it's a, it's not an exact apples to apples comparison. I'm aware of that, okay? The point is through proper marketing and through proper management, they have cultivated a higher demand and people are willing to pay more who don't live. And matter of fact, people are coming from all over the world to play at that golf course. We have a huge, you know, national travel to our area. We have a lot of Legoland and SeaWorld people that are staying in our hotels in Vista. Legoland drives a large hotel stay for us. So if, you know, if we could do a better job of attracting those people who are maybe even from out of state, they could pay more. But so maintaining the affordability for Vista families, very important. And I've also said that maintaining our senior citizens, our Vista senior citizens' access, we have our lap swimming that we've just brought back. To me, those are the first three things that I would say to anybody, and I believe there are seven organizations now that want to submit a proposal. They're waiting for this council to outline what items would be, you know, would be acceptable to make a proposal and which items wouldn't. So this is, purpose of this conversation is for the council to say what things that they would not be willing to consider and which things that they believe must be included. So with that, I'll start with councilmember Contreras.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I totally agree with these fundamental principles. However, I completely disagree with the need for an RFP and I disagree with equating the water, Wave Water Park to golf. Golf is a luxury. The Wave Water Park, as it gets hotter and hotter for Vistans and people around Vista, they are looking for some relief. I think it's, it's not, you just can't equate it with Torrey Pines Golf at all. This is a question for city manager. City manager, can you give us a history of the city's subsidy to the wave?
Complete history, I don't think, but I know that.
Yeah, since it was, since it was created. Now, when did, when did we have a subsidy that we needed to provide and when didn't we?
From my knowledge, we've had a subsidy, I think, every operating year that the wave's been open to some degree. Some years worse than others, obviously. Was much worse during COVID. It's slowly declining now with some increased attendance.
Okay. Because I do remember at the last discussion that prior to COVID, we weren't looking at, there weren't large subsidies.
We've had subsidies, they were much smaller, yeah. I don't know the range.
Like 100,000?
They were more than that. I think they were less than a half million. Angela's here, she might be able to provide some of those numbers.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
It's come down, thanks, Angela.
Angela's a wealth of knowledge on this.
Hi, good evening. So we have, we have had an allowable subsidy of 400,000. Prior to COVID, we were always able to meet that. So it was an allowable amount that the council was willing to subsidize the wave. Since COVID, we haven't been able to reach those numbers, but they have been decreasing over the years. So the first years after COVID, it was very substantial and each year it gets a little bit smaller.
And what's the percentage reduction? Are we done with the season?
No, we'll be open weekends through the end of, through September. So we'll be open six more weekends and we have two private rentals also.
Okay, so we're almost to the end. I can never remember when it actually ends because I feel like it should not be ending, which is something that I've, a comment that I've made. I mean, we're in the climactic wonderland is the tagline of our city. And I just, I just really, it's just like mind-baffling that we have to pay to operate this to keep it warm, you know? Now we're going to have some lap swim, which is great, but I just feel like we should keep it open a little bit more. So prior to COVID, we were looking at a subsidy about 400,000 maximum. And right now, we're at almost a million. What are, what are some of the things that can help us reduce that subsidy?
So in the past, we did have a reserve account that we were able to use for maintenance costs. And then recently, we've been putting maintenance costs into the budget. So as opposed to using reserve money that doesn't essentially count against us, we were able to use reserve funds to pay for unexpected maintenance or maintenance that we knew was upcoming. And in the past, we would ask for. upcoming. And in the past, we would ask for those allocations from council and they would be given. And it wasn't an expense that is essentially was expense versus revenue, which I think has adjusted the numbers.
If I may add also, our grants writer is also constantly looking for grants, specifically energy efficient grants that may help with some of those costs as well.
Yeah, because we're still using a gas heater, right?
I also want to mention, we are replacing a lot of that equipment with the money that was just recently approved. So we're hoping our efficiency gets higher with that and reduces our budgeted utilities.
And what's the timeline for project completion?
It's, we have to do some of the work this off season and some of the work next off season. So it won't be completed until winter of next year or spring of '27.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it's kind of premature to look at doing an RFP while we just, in the last meeting, utilized with $3.5 million to upgrade and modernize the wave. I would like to see, you know, those modifications actually come to fruition and be able to assess the wave from there. Because some of the issues too is that we've had to, we've had to close the wave, right, because of different issues. So it hasn't necessarily been open every single day that it could.
Yeah, correct. So since COVID, every season has kind of been different and we're still recuperating some maintenance issues that weren't really addressed during COVID. So if we can keep up on the maintenance, then we have all the attractions available and it, you know, over time, if a rental comes and we'll have people rent on this wave every summer, people trickle off because an attraction's not available. So there's no buy-in for them to come back with their group. So we have lost some users because we haven't been able to have the attractions up because we don't have the funding to do it in the off season too. And then something happens, then we ask for emergency monies.
Okay. No, that's really, that's really important information. Yeah, I'm just, you know, I've never been in favor of an RFP. It's probably not a surprise. I've been against it every single time it's come up. I just think that this is such a critical asset and there's been a lot of, you know, just deferred maintenance on the wave. And I'm glad that this council is taking up this issue because this has been for generations now that we've needed to, to put more funding towards the wave. I would like to have more discussions in the future about the difference between having a reserve account or how we're doing it now, any recommendations on that. Also, you know, taking a look at our programs, like the private rentals, just to get some more data as to, you know, how much income we're generating with some of these rentals. I do think that there's opportunities to potentially expand, you know, some of the square footage for rentals or whatever the case might be. But I think it's really important for us to look at that data. I think we've, we've already, you know, spent a lot of city resources doing a lot more marketing than we've ever done. And I just, I would like to see the Wave Water Park on our socials a lot more. You know, I think those are things that we can do in-house that I don't have to pay a consultant to do, nor would I want to, because I think we have some really amazing talent in-house for our social media and we've seen that. And I just don't think that any kind of private operator is going to give the consideration to the city of Vista and to residents, you know, they're not going to be able to do that better than we do. This is a place where people can come and, you know, they can complain to us about different things. I can foresee different issues with the private operator, you know, maybe not giving the best type of customer service. So I just think that there's a lot of issues potentially. And I don't want staff to have to go through a whole bunch of hurdles to do an RFP when it's not necessarily needed or the best thing to do at this point. I would love to see these investments of $3.5 million actually come to fruition. And at that point, if, you know, we're not seeing movement downwards in the subsidy, then potentially, you know, that, let's talk about an RFP at that point. But we're so far away from that. I just think it's, it's a little premature to talk about it at this point. All right, thank you so much. That's it for me at this time.
Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. So when it comes to some of the, the things that I, you know, I'm open to an RFP. I think it's good to have as much information as possible and see what other people would do to make this work. I think financially, there's, there's some things that when I look at the numbers on it with a, you know, $400,000 subsidy, if that doesn't include all that deferred maintenance, because it came out of different accounts, it kind of changes the picture of what that looked financially. If you're to actually have to, you know, come up with money out of, out of revenues, like, you know, then that would be a little bit different. And now that we do, we can kind of see a more clear picture of what the, the actual cost to operate it is. So I think this is probably a little bit more of an accurate picture of the, of the true costs rather than maybe how we, we used to do it, it sounds like. But I think we're also, there's, there's the elephant in the room of the, the $15 million potential expenditure that we're going to have to make in the next 10 years to redo a lot of the different other facilities outside, you know, the locker rooms and a lot of that, that, you know, I think it was really good that we put, that we did this, this current round of investments to make sure we get it up to, you know, safety code and we get, we get the quality up for our residents and making sure that, that you guys have the, the funds you need to make sure you got a great facility there. And I think you have been doing an absolutely fantastic job with what you have. So, so kudos to that. You know, but I think that, that investment that we made actually gives us a lot more leverage in something like an RFP. Because if we're going to talk about durations, that's one thing that I'd like to discuss in any potential RFP is, you know, what's the duration of the contract? What kind of out clauses do we have if there's non-performance, things like that? And if someone's going to come in and immediately have to drop three and a half million dollars to get it up to safety code, we, you know, that, that changes that, that negotiating power quite a bit. So I think even with that negotiation, that, that investment, I think that, that put us in a much better position. And of course, it's just great for our residents because now they get to enjoy a much needed upgrade for the, you know, for some of those concrete slabs and things that, you know, need some heavy TLC. When it comes to marketing, I mean, that's something I do for a living. That's my, my side job. And, you know, I see the, the tough job the city has when it comes to communications and marketing. I think our team does an absolutely amazing job on that as well for, for the struggle, the crazy uphill battle that is with how many departments you have of, of amazing programs to talk about. You know, if we were to give enough love to every program that it deserved, our page, we'd probably be, you guys would be posting non-stop, which is infeasible. And, and honestly, like, I don't think the general public would even want to have that many posts come out from, from us, even if they were all valuable. So it's, it's always hard when you don't have a lot of things to talk about in marketing, but the, it's just as hard when you have too much to talk about. And that's, that's kind of our problems. We do a very good job at a very large amount of things. So, so that's where, you know, some of that kind of stuff is, I could see some, some potential help being, being to separate those, right, and to kind of create. The wave is one of those things where it's a public park, it's a public facility for, for our residents, but it kind of has that built in, you know, amusement park kind of feel that is not typically operated by a municipality. We're not necessarily the best body of people to be, you know, talking about, you know, doing price analysis and, you know, marketing, comparative marketing analyses and, you know, trying to, anything that's typically, you know, profit motive type businesses, governments are not very good at. And that's by design, which is, and I think it's a good thing. But that kind of makes us in this weird predicament where, you know, we've, we treat it like a, you know, like a park and like a, a public asset. And then, you know, that makes it, so we have to have an allowable subsidy because that's what you do with parks. They all cost, they don't make, do any of our parks make us money? That's not a, no, that's not a, that's not a thing typically. So when it comes to different things, I'd like to see it. I mean, while I don't think this is something we wouldn't even, even need to really write into it, I think it's really important though, we make sure that they, we keep our summer camps and some of those types of things. Again, that's probably not something that they'd want to get rid of, but I want to make sure that they stay affordable for our, you know, our local kids and residents. I think that one's a, a no-brainer on that one. And then, of course, that, the discussion of duration, you know, cancellation, all those kinds of things, just to make sure that we don't get in a situation where we have, we bring in an operator, they give us terrible customer service and we're locked into a 10-year contract with them. That would be a disaster. So those are my big concerns. But if, I'm sure that, you know, with a expertly written RFP, like I'm sure our city will put together, we'll, we could get rid of a lot of those concerns of mine. So that's, that's it for now. But, you know, I'm open, very open to the, to seeing the information and see what we get from, from some of those people that want to see what they could do for the wave. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Thank you. The first question, well, first, thank you for the presentation. I know that this has been a long conversation. But the first question I have for you, we just went through this whole master, our Parks Master Plan, all these other things. And I know the wave was encompassed in that. Have we turned over every stone for any grant funding opportunities? So if we looked into Prop 68, have we looked into the land and water conservation fund grant that's out there? Are these things that we've applied for or studied?
I can speak on our end. Our grants writer has, we, city manager's office has looked at several grant opportunities, opportunities, including Prop 68. I think one of the most recent ones was a Public Works Economic Development Grant that was, recently came out. So we are continually looking for grants. Also, some energy efficient, possibly doing solar to help with that, with those costs. But we are also looking at grants that perhaps we can leverage the 3.5 million as match, as a match that will enhance some of the repairs or other areas of the wave. And I'm not sure, and I'm sure Angela, yeah, similar grants that her staff have looked at as well.
I'll ask that differently. Have we applied for any grants?
I think recently, based on the eligibility that we looked at, I think the Public Works Economic Development, we're still looking at some of the Prop 68 grants, depending on how, how, you know, how competitive they will be, will, will apply, but we haven't recently.
I don't think we qualify for Prop 68. It's more of just a question to see what's available. Because there is funding out there. And so when we talk about subsidies, when we talk about trying to create funding or different funding mechanisms or putting out an RFP, but we haven't explored every opportunity. So like the City of Chico just got $6 million for upgrades. And that was off Prop 68. But there was another city, and I forget which one it was, they had 6.5 million awarded to them. And so I'd be very hesitant to put an RFP until we know all of the funding mechanisms and sources that are available. And as far as the, the cost of, of golf, Omni Lacosta is another one that's right down the road. Pristine Course, they host the NCAA championships. For a non-resident to go there, it's $200 for the one course and 370 for the other course during non-peak times. And what I feel like would happen is if we keep all the rates the same for our residents, we're actually going to have the inverse effect of pricing people even that come from outside our community to come to this park because there's going to be 15 million in upgrades. They're going to have to pay an exorbitant fee just to get in. And why would they when they can go, I'm sure, I don't know if Ocean Side's still going to do their water park, a litany of different things, if they're going to be paying that type of price to get in. The other concern I have, and this was actually brought up by a resident to me, is that the initial RFP isn't my concern. It's the slow erosion of control over a public entity over time. Because we're not all going to sit on this dais forever. And so in 10 or 15, 20 years, however long it is, you know, as we continue to put an RFP out, as we continue to let a third-party operator hold this, at some point, it's just going to become the common practice. And when you look at a site like Torrey Pines, which you mentioned, and it's, it's an accurate depiction of it, but Torrey Pines takes in 40 million a year, they profit 14 million, and it all just goes into a reserve fund. So the city doesn't actually profit off of that, but it does help to maintain the course and other courses that are, I think they have three municipal golf courses, Torrey Pines being one of them. So until we've actually explored all grant funding opportunities for the maintenance aspect of this, I'd have a hard time going to an RFP for an operator standpoint. Now, from a marketing standpoint, and to find fresh and different ideas to utilize it for either after hours, for adults, whatever it might be, to try and generate additional revenue, I'd be open to. I think to the point that's been made, though, it's kind of hard to advertise something when you need to paint or get rid of rust or update things. And so until some of the infrastructure updates are made and we can kind of go through and walk through the process that would be, I'd really be curious to see what type of funding is available from the state or federal grants before I'm willing to put an RFP out. But I also think that, you know, the public's going to have an opportunity. And I've had people reach out to me saying that they don't want a third-party operator. And these are people that don't even utilize the wave. And there's a lot of different mechanisms that will be coming up in the future, whether it's Prop L funding and we can put it to the vote of the people if they want to continue Prop L and utilize that funding to hire more deputies or fix the wave and maintain it and subsidize it that way, purchase more, whatever it might be. Those opportunities are going to exist. And so at this point in time, outside of a marketing or, or different operational facility aspect beyond what we're doing already, I'd have a really hard time putting an RFP out that would support something like that until we know every funding option has been exhausted. If that does occur, I'm more open to that conversation. But I just don't think at this time I'd be supportive of it based on that. And those are my comments for, for now. I'd like to hear from the rest of the council.
Councilmember Fox, to your comments, obviously profitability would be the goal or a reduction of the approximately two to two and a half million dollars of loss that we have right now. Because though we're losing, what's the last year's subsidy?
I want to say it was about $900,000.
$900,000. So we've got, we've got between two and two and a half million dollars a year of loss there. We've got $1 million in actual subsidy. We've got another $1 million in deferred maintenance that we're not paying for. If we were paying for maintenance on a regular schedule so that the wood wasn't all rotten and falling apart, we'd be spending, we'd be losing $2 million. So we've got operators who have suggested that they believe, and they're willing to crunch the numbers, and they believe that they could make the entity profitable. They're not going to crunch the numbers and make a considered proposal because to do so would require a lot of their time for analysis. And, you know, frankly, if you put a proposal forward, you're saying if it's adopted, if, if we, the city wants to sign it, you got to live with it. It takes a lot not to come up with a supposal, but to come up with an actual contractual proposal. Nobody's going to take the time to put the pencil to it and hire their, their MBAs to crunch the numbers if we're not at least united in wanting to see a proposal. We just sat here and had a special workshop meeting to talk about taking all the trees out of the medians and paving over all of the medians, getting rid of all the landscaping and turning off the water. And even was discussed by Mr. Sylvia, turning off the lights on the arterial roadways because there is absolutely no way, according to staff, that we will be able to continue to fund these vital priorities. Yet, well, it was brought, you can holler false out of turn. I prefer you wager your opportunity to speak to disagree, make a note with which you disagree and then say, I'm, I'm saying so it's not true. However, yeah, am I, Deputy Mayor, I'm dramatizing, okay? Of course, on questioning, they said we have a $6 million surplus. So it wasn't the urgency that it was. But let me, let me be very clear right now. And I'm going to, I'm going to ask all of our employee groups to pay close attention to what I'm about to say. You know, as there's been upward pressure for payrolls and maintaining our pension obligations, and the people that live in Vista would like to see the landscaping maintained and us to maintain the beauty of the city, and for our young people, maybe they'd like their children one day to be able to use the wave. We have allowed this thing because of our poor management to be driven to the ground. Now, we did a cell phone survey of cell phone data. I don't, we probably don't have it here. Does anybody remember? First of all, what's, what's the max customer count we've ever had for the wave? Do we know? How many people can we accommodate?
We can accommodate 1,500. Last time we hit that number was-
1,500 a day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And what is our average capacity? What's our average occupancy or ticket sales for the whole season?
We have been averaging between 70 and 80,000.
Seven, eight.
In attendance. So it could be, that includes pass holders, ticket holders.
Okay. So how many days are you in operation every year?
About 90.
Okay, so 90 times 1,500? Yeah?
1,500 is, yeah, our capacity.
You said 1,500 a day times 90 days?
Could be, yes.
So, so that's 135,000 capacity for the season. 90 times 1,500?
Oh, gotcha. Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, at capacity.
If we hit capacity every single day. I'm just trying to catch you up.
He's in my ear over here, saying, well, that's at, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You have an inventory. You're open X number of days. You can accommodate Y number of patrons. X times Y is your capacity. You could expand capacity by being open a greater number of days. Now, you're saying that we're selling about 80,000 visits to the wave, correct? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So minus 80,000 means we have an unsold capacity of 55,000. Now, this is what I want to ask about the cell phone data. We looked at it, and we're able to determine how many visits are people that live in the city of Vista. Do we remember that number? I don't want you to guess at it. Either you remember or you don't. It's okay if you don't. But do we remember what that number is?
I don't remember, but I might have the paper.
That's okay. What was the last part you said? Okay. All right. I appreciate you taking a look for that, because we could further back out the, the number. What we want to look at is how many Vista trips, how many Vista days are we selling? That is really the floor we're at right now. Everything above that, between, let's say that right now, we're selling 20,000 passes to Vistins every year, and there's 135,000 passes possible. That means there's 115,000 passes possible to be sold to non-residents or to increase the visits from Vistins. But the bottom line is, right now, the unsold capacity, if we created greater demand, we could increase the ticket price for non-Vistins, and we could massively increase revenues. Why would we not want the wave to be a profitable entity for the city if it could be? Why would we not want to have a greater ability to honor our pension obligations to our employees? Why would we not want to be in less of a situation where we got to sit here on a Thursday night for three hours talking about taking out the trees and our landscaping, you know? I'm, I'm putting the community of Vista, I'm putting the people of Vista on notice. This is what irresponsible spending looks like, and unwillingness even to hear a proposal because of the fear that the council might be convinced of a good idea. We don't even want to hear it. Don't even bring it forward, because we might see something that makes sense, and we would have to explain to people why we thought it was going to, come on. This is about fiscal stewardship. This is about being able to continue to protect the wave for future generations. If you continue to allow it to lose money and not invest to keep it up, it's not an asset that anybody's very proud of. I, I just, it's so illogical to me that you would want the thing to continue to lose money, and you wouldn't even hear. I'm not saying, we're not arguing about accepting a proposal tonight. Literally, you won't even hear a proposal. You won't even hear it. Obviously, profitability has to be part of it. If they can't deliver profitability, then as you said, Councilmember Fox, there'd have to be a non-performance clause. If somebody says they're going to come in and make it profitable for us, and they cannot diminish our loss or increase profitability, if they can't turn the number around, then what good is it having them? So that's clearly something that has to, to be considered in a proposal. Councilmember Contreras mentioned customer service. Obviously, the way somebody treats the citizens of Vista and customers in Vista matters. I completely, I mean, that's, that's got to be the, the council has to have some oversight over, you know, the service there. Summer camps, that's a great, great catch. We have to make sure summer camps are continued. This idea about people wouldn't come, Councilmember O'Donnell, because the ticket price is too high. Again, you are now playing analyst for the wave, but you're not spending 40 hours a week doing business analysis at the wave. You really don't know what the proper price for a ticket is. I don't either. I don't know what people from outside would pay. But I do know that there are people that are in the business of pricing these things that would invest a lot of time and thought into that. And right now, our method of selling a lot of our tickets is to sell them at a massive discount online. That's one of the ways that we drive. How many Groupon tickets did we sell this season?
Zero.
Zero. Well, that's good. How many discounted tickets did we sell?
We have happy hour. That every day, the last two hours is 12, or $11 to come in.
We didn't offer any discounted tickets online? Do we didn't last year either?
We did last year.
Okay.
But we did not this year.
In many years, we've offered a large number of discounted tickets online, and that's been one of the ways that we've sold our tickets, you know? And again, this is not about an assault or an attack on the way we're running it now. It's about getting some help for you to make the entity a success. I think you're doing a fine job with managing the day-to-day activities. This is about big picture investment. This is about finding an operator who would be potentially willing to invest millions of dollars into the wave for a long-term contract for which they could achieve a return on their investment. They come in, they put a few million dollars additional in, maybe they put $10 million in over 10 years, and they're able to improve profitability, they're able to recoup their investment, and they're able to make a profit for themselves, and the city of Vista reduces its losses or makes a profit along with them. We don't know because we're not even going to be allowed to hear a proposal. I think that, you know, it's, it's a fine idea to bring somebody in to do some marketing, but Councilmember O'Donnell, I think it was you that said, and I think you're absolutely right, you know, without the investment, to bring the thing up to spec and make it beautiful, without the investment to put some new attractions in to replace, the three and a half million dollars, is that going to replace the Flow Rider?
It's going to fix it.
It's going to fix it, but it's not going to replace it.
It's going to be in the phase two approach. So like John said, it's going to go over to off-season. So this off-season, we're going to concentrate on the competition pool, which needs to be replastered, some of the decking and gel coating the slides, and that'll repaint the, or they'll give the slides each a new color, which will kind of-
With the Flow Rider, specifically the Flow Rider.
That's going to be phase two, so that'll be next off-season, so.
And we're going to repair it, and it's going to last for how long after the repairs?
So the, it'll have a different coating. So the vinyl coating, I'm not sure the life, the life of that, but it won't be every year that we're doing annual maintenance on it. So right now, we're doing annual maintenance that goes between 10 and $15,000 every off-season. And we're, if we look into what we're going to do in phase two with the 3.5 that you have given us, that it'll give it a vinyl coating, which should provide longevity.
And what about the, the pump operation and all that? Is that?
So the pumps, we rotate the pumps, and we refurbish them every off-season, so we have four pumps.
Weren't we looking at upgrading or replacing the pumps altogether? No?
Yes, because we, these pumps are about six years old, so they probably last about 10 years, maybe 15 if we provide the right-
And is, is replacing those pumps part of the 3.5 million dollars that we authorized?
I-
I don't believe so. I think it's-
I don't think it is either.
Yeah, so that would be-
So that's, that's another cost that we're going to have to bear. My point is less about the Flow Rider specifically or the pumps. It's more about amusement parks invest in new attractions constantly, okay? And this keeps people coming through the door. Spending a couple million dollars to invest in an attraction brings people in. Where is the next nearest water park? They have a little water park at Legoland? They do, right?
Yeah, Legoland has a water park. You have to buy admission to Legoland and then upgrade to the water park admission. The nearest municipal water park is La Marada, and there's also one in Palmdale.
Where's La Marada? The city of La Marada?
Yeah, city of La Marada.
Is that the Palm Desert?
Um, Palm-
Or it's Orange County?
Yeah, La Marada is-
There's one in Chula Vista, isn't there? Don't they have, or is that private?
Did that one just open?
I don't know.
There's one in Chula Vista that just opened with a resort attached to it.
My, my point is, Councilmember O'Donnell, I'm going to make my final appeal to you here, is, you know, this is not the last conversation we're going to have about maintaining the, the course of our fiscal health. And every time we have an opportunity to look at a million here, a million there, and this is literally $2 million of investment every single year, I am asking you, as a resident of Vista, to look after the fiscal health of our city. And I would ask you, as a council colleague, to lay out your specific objections other than some number of people have asked you not to do this, but why do they not want to do it? What is their fear? Can you speak to the specific concern that they offer you? And can you validate that concern as one that the public should be worried about in this RFP? We hear Councilmember Contreras repeatedly say, no, they're going to sell the wave. No one's selling the wave. No, they're going to raise the price. Nobody will be able to afford it. We haven't even seen a proposal. We have no idea. Why is it that you can't come back and look at the proposal and go, you know what, seven people had an opportunity to provide a reasonable proposal. I don't like any of the proposals, and so I can't vote for any of them. I don't sort of understand why we can't even hear, we can't even get a proposal, when we have organizations, now seven of them, seven different organizations want to provide a proposal, all believing that they can increase and improve the profitability, all willing to take financial risk to do so, and we're not even going to allow them to submit a proposal, that we could then come back to this council and debate? I don't understand it. Councilmember Contreras.
Okay. Let's, let's rewind the tape here for some revisionist history correction. So first, Mayor Franklin, you may say it's dramatic, but it's just flat-out lying. So that's what you're doing. You first, last meeting, you went and you blamed our management for you not knowing that the wave wasn't in good condition. I don't know, maybe you could have checked it out when you were throwing Timmy into the pool. Did you not see? I was with you. This is like, it's just like baffling to me. Anyways, the other thing is, I'm tired of hearing this whole thing about how we want to remove all the landscaping and just pave concrete. That is not what happened at that conversation. And I'll tell you that the public knew because I got phone calls from residents saying, hey, I really like your idea. Let's talk about it more. Let's, let's get Waterwise in our medians. Okay, so that's, that's one thing. And if we rewind to the first series of these conversations, you talked about your friend who was a private operator that spoke to you about this. So I have to ask the question, why are you fighting so hard to have a private operator? I don't know if there's like a, there's some kind of backroom deal that's happening. I'm not talking to those folks, but you are pushing really-
It's pretty rich from the council member who gets a salary of $75,000 to lobby an organization that's owned by the city of Vista in part. Pretty rich.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Pretty rich.
So-
The public knows.
No, they don't. Okay. So again, dramatic equals lying. So at the end of the day, we have heard from the public very clear about this. And it's really interesting because, you know, when it comes to something, something else, you're like, oh my gosh, we're getting all this public input and people, you know, we got to listen to the public. But any other time where the public comes forward, and I've been in that audience before, coming forward, where there's been zero people in favor of your ideas, and you're like, well, let's just do it anyways. And so I feel like I'm in this kind of like weird John Franklin fantasy of like revisionist history, where you're like, let's just move forward with this. It doesn't make sense to go with a private operator right now. We just put 3.5 million dollars into this. We need to see the upgrades come to fruition. We have opportunities to streamline. We also have other funding buckets that potentially could be utilized to upgrade when it comes to things that might be in line with our climate action plan. So, you know, I just, there's no consensus here for an RFP. So I think we're done with this conversation. There hasn't been three people on this council that are like, yes, let's do an RFP right now, because it is foolish to do an RFP right now. So I think we're done with this conversation. I have nothing else to say.
Well, that's a first.
Yeah, I know. You tried to put a five-minute timer on me. So, but you're the one who pontificates on and on and on and on every single meeting. So anyways, let's just be done with this conversation. There is no consensus on an RFP.
You finished?
We already agreed to fund upgrades, correct? We have not looked into potential funding sources that are available, or let me rephrase that. We have not applied for any that could be available from the state or federal government for funding that could be there for upgrades.
Thank you for the question. We did, the only application that I could recall recently was to one of our legislators via state earmark for a possible solar at the wave, which was not moved forward.
I know that you are in this position for a limited time in this capacity, so I apologize for asking this, because you may not know the answers. And if you don't, that's okay. How much revenue do we generate off the senior center every year?
I would have to look that up. I apologize.
City manager, do you know how much revenue we generate off the senior center every year?
It's almost none. I mean, it's very, very minimal.
Do we subsidize any money to them?
Absolutely, yeah. We subsidize the nutrition program.
How much do we make off Bringle Terrace Park?
None. We, we subsidize all the park facilities.
Do we put money into that park so the public can enjoy it every year?
Yes.
What about the skate park? Do we make money off that?
No, it's a free facility.
But we do put money into the maintenance and operational facilities and making sure it's maintained.
Yes.
The Moonlight, how much does the city generate off funding for the Moonlight? I understand there's some nuance to that question because there's some different mechanisms in there, but I'm just curious what our profitability is at the Moonlight every year.
We generally don't break even on the Moonlight. We get a subsidy from the Moonlight Foundation to cover our subsidy typically, so the city zeros out at the Moonlight.
We don't get any money from the Moonlight?
Most years.
We promote it. The city promotes the hell out of the Moonlight, right?
Yes, so does the foundation.
I bring this up because, Mayor, I understand all of your points. And this is not to be in jest or, but we subsidize a lot of public assets in the city that I would not ever sell off to a third-party operator. And I understand it's apples to oranges in some of these situations. The, the very real concern that is brought up to me by residents time and time again is the, the loss of public control over a public asset. And over time, that is a very real thing. Torrey Pines probably did not start off as a public, or as a private entity, operating a public facility. But if the city of San Diego tried to take it back at this point, it would probably be near impossible for them to accommodate, or to accomplish that. You know, if you look at a, even a sports team or a professional sports team, I'm a White Sox fan. The average attendance was 17,931 in 2024. That stadium can hold a capacity of 40,615. That means of the 3,289,815 individuals that could have gone to a baseball game, only 1.4 million went. They're not trying to sell the team, right? They're trying to put money into the team, invest and, and build the upgrades so that people will come so they can be positive generating. It's, it's, you could shake your head, but it's a fact. I mean, not every-
I'm shaking my head because you've twice said sell off or sold the team. No one's talking about selling the wave. Talk about dishonest. That's patently dishonest to continue-
Did I, did I say that?
You said sell off. I wrote it down.
Or have a third-party operator.
And you just said sell the team.
Yeah, they're not having somebody else come in and operate the team.
No one is suggesting selling the wave. No one has ever suggested that. That is patently not true.
Have I, have I ever suggested that that's what you're trying to do?
You literally used the word sell off.
I just said the White Sox are not trying to sell their team based on nobody's showing up.
I wrote it down. You literally used the word sell off the wave.
All right. So my, my apologies.
That's literally verbatim.
Should we hire a third-party operator to operate any of these public facilities? And the answer to me is no. Again, it is the slow undoing of a public control of a public asset that's going to take place and will erode over time. We can look at every other option, and again, it is up to the public. If, if we want to put it on a Prop L extension, we can let them decide. And if they vote it down, it's a completely different conversation. But we know we have a 10-year runway to figure this out. So why we need to jam it through right now doesn't make sense. When we haven't explored every grant funding option, you want to talk about fiscal responsibility, I think it would be irresponsible if we don't at least explore every option we have to try and find funding sources for upgrades before giving it over to a third party. And so I'm willing to, at some point, explore it if that's what we need to do. But with a 10-year runway, I mean, I, you can ask any staff member in this building or anywhere out in the city if they think that I want to take away their pension or, or reduce their, their wages in any way or let anybody go. And I can promise you, every single one of them that has ever talked to me, met me, or know me, or heard me speak about them will know that I would never, ever, ever, ever do that. In fact, when I ran, I made a promise that I would never lay off people if we ever fell into that fiscal cliff again. So to paint it in any other way, if you want to talk about disingenuous, that is the most dising- disingenuous statement towards what I'm trying to accomplish that could be made. So that's it. Like I said, until we have explored every single option, and until there is a genuine public desire to not subsidize it, because I've, I have talked to residents of my district that do not utilize the wave, that are more than willing to subsidize it because they know the public benefit. Are there others that don't? Of course there are. But my point of that is, we have not even looked at every option. So you're right, an RFP is an option, but until I know that we can't get any other funding resources available to offset the $15 million 10 years from now, I can't support it. So those are my reasonings, but also I am very concerned, and Torrey Pines is a perfect example of that, that over time, it will erode the ability for us to have accountability at the wave, erode the ability for us to have any oversight at the wave, erode the ability for us to take back what would be a public asset. And so if we cannot do that at this time, that's what I'd be looking to do. Those are my reasons. I don't think that they're insincere, I don't think that they're out there, I think that they are very legitimate in trying to make sure that we've literally turned over every stone possible to fund this public asset for the public. And so those are my reasons. And I appreciate if you disagree with them, but I mean, at this time, I'm not supportive of it. I'm not saying that in the future, we can't explore it, and I know that, I don't, I can't tell you if that's six months or six years from now. I may not even be on the council when that happens, but it's something that definitely will have to be talked about if there's no other funding sources. But that's why I'm not supportive at this time. And those are all my comments.
Councilmember Fox.
That was a fun one. Yeah, I mean, yeah, we always, we always have a good time with the wave, that's for sure. So sorry that you're always the one that has to sit in that chair when we do this, so. The, I think there's a couple of things that, you know, with the difference between a marketing operator or a marketing RFP versus a full-blown operations RFP, is there's a couple of different things that I think we're facing here that one helps within one and the other one doesn't, which is the staffing piece, where we have a really hard time getting people in to extend the seasons and later hours and a lot of those different things that, because of just the workforce that we hire through and stuff, I just, I can't think of a way that a marketing, you know, RFP would really help with that too much. I'd love to be able to get you the staffing you need, you know, and she'll be able to do these, have the season open longer. I mean, I think you would love to if you could, I'm guessing. So, so that's one of those kinds of things where, you know, I, the only thing that I've, you know, after thinking about this long and hard, the only thing I can think about that would potentially solve that issue would be bringing in some sort of organization that has access to staffing outside of, you know, outside of our normal staffing pool. When it comes to the mayor's point about, you know, adding different amenities and different things like that, I mean, this 3.5 million, if I remember correctly, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, it's not necessarily like upgrades, as in like, we're building new amenities or doing anything necessarily new, it's more replacing concrete and things that have jagged edges and people are stubbing their toes on and, you know, things like that, correct?
Correct.
Because, I mean, I think there could be a lot of things we could do with, you know, food and beverages and so many different things that might require a significant level of investment, which, you know, depending on how it was proposed, I mean, I'd be very interested in, you know, because there's, there is a, you know, as a business person, you know, it makes sense to put money into something when you think it's going to have a larger benefit than what you put into it to the public, either through, you know, and for us, it's more in benefit to the community, but you know, for a business, it's profit. You know, I don't think it's a bad, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing that we have a subsidy for the wave. I mean, it is a park, we do get public value out of it, that's what people's taxes go towards. My fear is that we're not necessarily being fiscally responsible with it. I think that that subsidy needs to go towards making it affordable for Vistins, and, you know, so that subsidy goes towards guaranteeing access to everyone in Vista, right? Like, that's, that's, you know, something where we're putting money into this amenity, we would have to demand that, right? If taxpayer money's going towards it, our residents need to have access to it, period. I think that that makes a lot of sense to me. And I don't think I'd want to lose that necessarily, right? Like, that's something where, that's a worthwhile investment. If we're able to put some money into the wave to, you know, reevaluate, you know, the snack bars, you know, and upgrade the menu into a full, you know, something where we could actually, you know, where people would spend a little bit more money, and that makes sense profitability-wise to, you know, where, number one, residents are getting access to better services because we've been able to upgrade that experience for them, and it creates new revenue. And that's the big thing about, about, you know, how business works, is you're not necessarily, you're not generating more revenue by providing the same service at a higher price. That's typically not what, if that was possible, you know, that's typically not possible, right? What you have to do to do that is improve level of service, right? You have to say, you're willing to spend more because we're giving you more. And so that actually does usually end up in more amenities, more things that people have access to. And so if we can get those upgraded level of service without having to pass that onto Vista residents in the form of a higher ticket price, to me, that's a win-win. And so that's where I'm seeing some things that make sense there. And I mean, when it comes to places like the Moonlight, I mean, I'm not under the impression that we necessarily book all the acts and, you know, and all that as a, you know, as a city, right? Like, we do kind of partner with people to do a lot of those things, correct?
As far as hiring acts, the contracts go through the city.
Yeah, but like, so do we like, we recruit all the plays and everything like internally and, you know?
We do. Our staff will go to conferences. We do have the Koch Foundation as well that we partner with, so, yes.
Yeah, because I was under the impression that they did quite a, they did, they had, you know, a big impact on that.
We do have partners, yeah, correct.
But, you know, that's a, it's an outside entity that we're partnered with to do a lot of those things, and so, you know, it's not a bad idea. So, you know, just, you know, I want to kind of lighten the temperature a little bit and just maybe, you know, I think that you have a lot of very valid concerns. I mean, those things, I think those are concerns that we should all have, but, you know, that's, I still think that as long as we are approaching this intelligently and, you know, just trying to get more information, and I'm, I still think it's not a bad idea. I'll leave it at that.
Deputy Mayor, do you want to hear from this public speaker? You want to go first? Of a member of the public, Mr. Frank Parks would like to be heard. Do you want to come forward and speak?
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, is this thing on?
Yep.
Okay. So I hope I don't have the three-minute, yeah, I guess I do.
Speak right into the microphone so we can hear you.
I was quicker before I was 75. So in a sense of moderation here, I'm thinking that, as it's been written in a book somewhere, All Time for All Things Under Heaven, and I think, I think RFPs have a place and a time. But in keeping with that thought, there's other possibilities, and I find that like the county and so on uses its citizenry for multiple things. And a good example would be, well, there's a building right next door here, what's that? Called the Friends of the Library. So what if we had something like the people who are responsible for the whole wave thing, for lack of a better, from the lay perspective, whatever you want to call it, the whole wave thing, and those who run it, operate it, make decisions regarding it? What if we had a group, Vista has a, probably more so than a lot of cities, has a great wealth of senior citizens who are retired, and some of us actually did something almost useful in our working careers, and maybe could lend a little something in terms of engineering, marketing, analysis, and all those other topics that have been addressed about what we might get out of an RFP. We might be able to bring that just from our own citizenry, and guess what? Maybe some of it would come at no cost, maybe most of it. So if we chose to form a group, which could be, ah, just the ramblings of an old guy, Friends of the Wave, and, you know, put a little group together and brainstormed and used people's abilities and so on, to try and figure out how can we increase the financial aspects of the wave? And then give it maybe some time to percolate, do what it does, and then, and then we could say, well, okay, all you old people didn't make it work, now it's time for the RFP, you know? So maybe we could form a little group, like I already said, I'm being redundant now, a little group to support this effort and see if something could be, I think it would be free, so when things are free, maybe they're worth trying. I think that's pretty much it. I actually came about the speed bump, but then I got interested in this and I, the senior lap thing. Anyway, so there you go. So I think that, let me see if I have any kind of, so we can analyze the progress of this thing, see is this thing working or not? And so I guess what I'm putting up for here is the ability to form a Friends of the Wave group and see if any good could come out of that. If not, we risked nothing, and then everybody can make their case for RFP.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Melendez.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you to the gentleman speaker. I appreciate that comment. And, you know, speaking to the speaker's point and to our staff and to the council, this is an item that I have brought up previously. We do have a Moonlight Cultural Foundation that I believe was born, when you listen to history, it was born out of urgency, right? The Moonlight Cultural Foundation really had to step in, right, to support the efforts for the performing arts. And I do believe, and I've mentioned it in previous meetings, thank you, sir, for rallying behind the idea that we could have a Friends of the Wave, we could have a wave foundation. And that's just one mechanism, right? But I really am having a hard time in this conversation because we've made all these arguments before, and I am concerned that we're getting into more and more extreme rhetoric in order to just make our case. I want to make it really clear that whether you're dramatizing or lying or bending the truth, fear mongering is not assessing the risks of a profit-driven entity occupying the wave before exhausting all other options, right? If you were to ask me my opinion, I actually support an RFP process at some point, at some time. And if developers want to come to me and they want to meet with me in my office and talk to me about their proposals and really sell me on it, I'm willing to listen to them. But I'm not getting approached like that, and I wonder why. But fear mongering is claiming that we as a city will be destroyed if we do not bring in some other entity, that we will have to turn off the lights, that we will have to burn the trees, that we will lose our pensions, right? That is quite excessive and inaccurate. So there are many avenues that we can go down, many roads we can go down. And I actually, I really prefer the gentleman speaker's recommendation, I've said this before, let's put a, our favorite thing, a committee together. And we are actually at the point, and I can check in with our city manager on this, we are actually about to wrap up a committee for our downtown, right? And so staff has been working with some stakeholders in our downtown regarding improvements, and I know Councilmember Contreras has been working on that, and there's been some progress there, right? So as we are finishing one project, could we look at some of our other public entities and come together with the community, but really more focused on fundraising, right, and long-term sustainability of these public amenities? And I really appreciate your arguments, Councilmember O'Donnell, that we already have a precedent of the wave being a public facility, and so what can we do to get the public more involved before we get a private entity involved? So I'm supportive of that, starting with, and then, I have said this from the very beginning of this discussion, I'm okay with having those difficult conversations with the community and saying, hey, y'all, we cannot afford this, there's no way we can do it on our own, we need, we need, you know, Daddy Warbucks to come in and fix it for us. But I don't think we're at that point yet, maybe we'll be at that point in a year. I'm open to having those discussions, but there are some other areas I would like to engage with our community before we enter into that process. But again, I'm open to having those discussions. If there are organizations that want to, companies that want to connect with me and talk to me, I'm probably more friendly to it than you'd think, right? But I'm really, really friendly to the ideas of our community and finding out what they have to say. So, and I would also just, you know, put it to my council members, you know, we really have authority to design some sort of foundation or committee. I would ask Councilmember O'Donnell if you would join the search with me, right? You know, I've, I've had a few conversations, but I think we could make a concerted effort to network and connect with, oh.
So a discussion, a potential discussion on a committee, we would need to agendize that.
Okay, I would like to agendize that.
That's what I was going to say, Walter, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Deputy Mayor, I was going to say the same thing.
That's perfectly fine, that's what he's here for. So I would like to agendize that, because we're going to do the work to find solutions for our troubles. But ultimately, you know, this compared to a lot of the other concerns that our residents have, you know, we do not have an immediate dire situation here when it comes to the wave. And if we do need to go to the public and say, we're not able to maintain this level of service, or we're going to have to make modifications, I'm okay with doing that and also offering the option of, hey, we need, we need third-party help. So I'm very open to that conversation, but I really appreciate, gentlemen speaker, for sharing your support of getting a group of resident advisors together, because that's a step we haven't explored yet. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
Just to answer your question without discussion, I would, I would like to see an agendized item discussing potential, I don't know if I can get on board with another committee, but maybe wrapping up something into our current parks or, we'll see, we can, I'm open to discussing. And I do want to be very clear, I agree with the idea that an RFP at some point would be necessary, and so just to kind of echo those statements that were just made, I'm happy to talk with anybody at any time, I just don't think now is the appropriate time to do it. Not the conversations, but to put an RFP out, until I know that we have explored every option, until I know that we've done everything possible, we've had larger community input, and in fact, I was planning on hosting a town hall next month, I will make it specific to community safety and the wave, so I can have a conversation with residents about those two items. I mean, that's all, but yeah, if there is anybody that wants to come speak with me, because if we have seven individuals that think that they can do such a bang-up job on this, then I would love to chat with them, so I'm armed with the information of what they could potentially do, because I have no idea, you know, and I know that's the purpose of getting an RFP, so you can review all of those things, but when one of us has that information and four of us don't, at least to my understanding, it makes it really challenging to understand that point of view. So either way, that's where I'm at at the moment.
Councilmember, I don't have the information. I have a businessperson who grew up in the city of Vista, whose parents still live in the city of Vista, whose business operates water parks in other parts of the state, who said to me, and I know this person, not because of some backroom deal, Councilmember Contreras, but because this is a member of our community, a bona fide member of our community, who said, you know, I saw your discussion about the wave, and instead of losing a million dollars a year, I think you have an asset that could make a million dollars a year. We have an $11 million park budget, and this represents $2 million of loss. So this is not an insignificant thing. We very much had a conversation, you can call it fear mongering all you want, we had an entire meeting, we had to sit here for three hours on a Thursday night, a special purpose meeting to discuss reducing landscaping, reducing street lighting, that was discussed, it's no fear, it's no exaggeration, and it's no lie. We had that conversation, did we not? Anybody's welcome to roll back the tape. We discussed it here Thursday night last. So I'm going to tell you what, Vista, when these three come to you and they want you to raise taxes, and they talk to you about extending Prop L, every time there's another half of a million dollars or another million dollars of wasteful spending, and this council majority refuses to entertain ideas for the public fiscal good, I want you to look back to this moment, and the employees who wonder whether or not they're going to receive their pension payouts, whether or not we're fully funding our pensions, whether or not we're going to have money to keep- going to have money to keep our employees at parity with inflation. I want you to think about the multitude of fiscally irresponsible decisions made by this council. And when they ask you to vote to raise taxes, I want you to resoundingly tell this council, no, you've been fiscally irresponsible. It's the reason I opposed the effort for the special district taxes because this council has spent irresponsibly, time after time after time. And they don't mind the million here and a million there, and pretty soon we're talking real money. And we wind up in fiscal deficit. We had a proposal from the city manager that showed us in a million and a half in year one, 2 million in year two deficit. How do we get from fiscal health? How do we get from surplus funds created by 10 years of strong fiscal management to the place where we have deficit budgets being proposed? Thank you to staff for finding a way to propose a budget that was balanced, or I wouldn't have voted for it. But if you want to talk about the best interests of the taxpayers of this city, I'm happy to defend to any person, anytime, why I will never support a tax increase in this city because of the fiscal irresponsibility of three members of this council who refuse to entertain good ideas, who take salaries from organizations who are attempting to influence, who lobby public entities like Sandag every single week, take a salary. Sandag, 3% of it belongs to the people of Vista. And yet a member of this council takes a salary from an organization with special interests to influence the outcomes of decisions there, like that's not nearly tantamount to a criminal activity. It is. The people of Vista should be outraged by it. And the fact that I have a friend who grew up in the City of Vista, who knows something and has some business expertise at this council, and now there are seven different organizations, seven different organizations who are completely unrelated, all who want to offer us a proposal. You know, it's not about the wave. It is about the wave. It's about the future of the wave, but it's about the way you conduct yourselves fiscally. So I'm telling you, Vista, I'm leaving this on the public record because I may no longer be the mayor in the future. But when this council majority comes to you and they want you to raise taxes, you vote no because they are fiscally irresponsible. This is how you drive a municipal government into deficit. This is how you bankrupt a government. This is how you wind up turning off streetlights, taking the trees out. It was discussed Thursday last. You can laugh about it all you want, but you sat right here and engaged in the discussion. So now who's a liar? You've been on this council for seven years. No, there's no point of information. I'm not done.
Okay, um, actually, I call.
You're out of order. I do not yield. I do not yield.
If you're not yielding, I call for a vote.
You've been on this council for seven years and you never made a point about deferred maintenance. You never made a point about deferred maintenance of the wave and come back here and act like somehow I should have known.
We are allowed to take a vote on a point of information.
We don't need to have a vote. Councilmember O'Donnell is recognized.
So there was a point of information called?
Point of information is not even a thing. Do you make a point of order?
A point of order, excuse me.
Do you seek recognition for a point of order?
Sure.
What's your point of order?
My point of order is that when I was first elected and I came on this council in 2018.
This doesn't sound like a point of order. Councilmember O'Donnell is recognized.
You were in a deficit and you had no problem spending money while the budget wasn't read.
We were not in a deficit when I was elected. That is false. State your point of order.
That's true. There was a 300 and something thousand dollars difference.
You have commandeered the floor from your colleague, Councilmember O'Donnell is recognized. You have commandeered the floor. You are not recognized. Councilmember O'Donnell is recognized.
Is Mr. Sylvia here? Is anybody from finance here that can speak to this? Can I please get a report to know that if $2 million will put us into fiscal deficit and financial straits that will not allow us to fulfill our obligation to our pensions or CalPERS, please?
Councilmember, no one is saying that $2 million is going to bankrupt this.
Mayor, that's exactly what was just said.
It's 2 million on top of 2 million, on top of a million, on top of a half of a million.
Mayor, I am speaking.
You're twisting my words.
I'm not twisting yours.
Yes, you are.
You're requesting information.
That is not what I am saying.
I'm requesting information.
I stipulate, you don't need to have somebody come down here. I stipulate that $2 million is not the difference.
With all due respect, you can yell at whoever you want. I am not a child. It is my turn on the mic. When it's your turn, you can address me. Thank you. You had also stated, and I will, this is a question to you. You said you've spoken to one individual, and yet earlier you said there are seven interested parties.
Yes, there are.
So if there are seven interested parties, where is that information coming from, is what I know? And if there are people that are interested in RFP that you have information that I have not received, and I don't know if the city manager can speak to this, but I would be willing and open to speak with them. That's what I was saying earlier. Beyond that, the assessment district that was voted down, I was also in opposition to, but that was a 25-year failure by this body. That wasn't this fiscal irresponsibility of the new majority. No one brought that up, and this was years in the making. So that could have been avoided over a long period of time. But I am going to, I'm going to make a motion to call for the, actually, I want to.
There's no motion. We're done. There's no motion. We're done.
So I'd like to end discussion on this. I think we're just going in circles at this point.
We will end the discussion, but your point about something that happened 30 years ago, you know, I was not even in high school 30 years ago.
I'm not blaming you.
Actually, I was in high school 30 years ago. No, I mean, you act like I was here when that, when the assessment districts were created.
You act like I was here, and I wasn't.
I didn't say you were here. And I didn't say that $2 million would bankrupt this. My point, my point.
Those were your exact words. That's not our fault.
What did I say?
You said the fiscal irresponsibility of this majority.
I stand by that statement.
That's great, but.
Absolutely.
This has nothing to do with the assessment district. That is 25 years in the making. That's my point. And so to blame three of us up here in the majority for that assessment tax, it has nothing to do with us. It happened to come before us while we're up here, but it's not our fault that people kicked the can down the road. It's not our fault or your fault that the wave has been kicked down the road for 30 years, but these are discussions we have to have, and we need to find resolutions to it. And at this time, I don't think an RFP is the ultimate resolution to solving the $15 million issue that we're going to face in 10 years from now. Again, I'm open to the discussion of talking to people. If there's more information to be had from other people that I'm not aware of that can contribute to this discussion, I will gladly meet with them. There's nobody I've ever turned down for a meeting in this city. And so if those people want to come forward to me and present a case of, hey, this is how we can make it profitable and beneficial, not just for the city, but for all of our residents, please bring that information to me because I will be very open to that discussion.
Are you finished? Please don't say, please bring that information to you. That is the point of having an RFP, is to have that information brought forth publicly. No, it is. That's the point of the RFP. And you are saying you don't want an RFP for an operator, so you're not asking for the information. You don't even want to hear the information. That's fine. I'm not trying to convince you at this point. I've lost the point. I'm well aware. I'm not trying to change your mind. What I am saying is that in the time that you have sat on this council and the two colleagues to your right have sat on this council and to my left, we have spent a half a million here, a million there, 2 million here, and I am not saying that $2 million is going to bankrupt the City of Vista. What I am saying is it's death by 1,000 cuts of a half million here and a half million there. And pretty soon we're talking real money, and this city is not going to be in the good fiscal health that it once was because of the poor leadership of the majority of this council. I thank Councilmember Fox for supporting me in a measure for fiscal responsibility. I wish that the rest of the council would take the fiscal health of our city as seriously. Now, let's go 10 more rounds. Council, Deputy Mayor, your turn.
Hi, this is a question for the city manager. This item is coming before us, not necessarily as a staff recommendation, but we have previously had some budget concerns, and we addressed those earlier this year. What is the opinion of the city manager's office and our finance department in terms of the financial risks to the city if we do not engage with a private operator for the wave?
So at this point, we budgeted for the wave in our current operating budget, so we're good for the next two years. We'll see where we are in 2027 when we do our next operating budget.
Wow. So, hey, community, as we're making these decisions together, I would say two years is a nice, you know, ramp to accomplish some of the goals that we have, which is to retain full independence of the wave. And, you know, as we move along in this process, including we will have another agendized discussion on the topic of community involvement in this, you know, we can continue to look at all of the options available. So I appreciate the discussion tonight. We were able to look at all of the options available, including what it would look like to bring in an RFP at this time.
Deputy Mayor, to your point, we have not fully funded the wave. Management brought in a consultant who apprised us that we were $15 million behind in deferred capital investment. We have locker rooms that haven't been upgraded since they were built in the 90s. We have all kinds of infrastructure that's failing. We have people that don't want to go there because we're not investing in it. And this is the point. We have not budgeted for it. We have $1 million a year worth of capital expenditures that we have not been making and that we need to make. So in addition to the $1 million that we're losing, look, how many rounds do we have to go about this? But you punched in and you said we're already budgeted for it for the next two years. The reality is that is not true. We have not budgeted for the CapEx that we are deferring. And Mr. Conley just said that's true. So I don't know how much longer you want to go, but, you know, I'm here all night. Deputy Mayor, you're recognized.
You did mention something, it's important for my investigation moving forward. You mentioned something, Mayor, that we have people who do not want to attend the wave. But we just discussed attendance. Are we at max capacity usually? Are we, are we really, are we missing out on people? What's the real status there?
Our attendance has been pretty standard for the past few years since COVID. It's been down about 10,000 since COVID, but it's been standard for the past three, four years that we've been open, same annual attendance. Thank you.
We just had this conversation. We just determined that 135,000 tickets per year is the maximum capacity, did we not? We just stipulated that. And we also stipulated that we sold 80,000. So we have surplus capacity that is significant amount that we could be selling. And one of the ways that we could bring profitability to the wave is by selling all of the tickets that we have in our inventory or more of the tickets we have in our inventory. I'm trying to make this public asset desirable. And yes, Councilmember O'Donnell, we're not paying $2 million a year to subsidize Bringle Terrace Park, and we're not paying $2 million to subsidize Optimus Park or Thibodeau Park or any of the parks in your district or yours, Councilmember Fox, or anybody else's district. These are, this is not, we're not talking about capital expenditures. We're talking about annual subsidies. So, you know, we absolutely have dialed back in years past the Moonlight Amphitheater when we couldn't afford to pay for it. You know, during COVID, we laid a lot of people off there. So I'm done. Councilmember O'Donnell, I brought this back because I asked you at an open meeting if you would entertain the conversation. I thought you were more open to it. Had I understood your total resistance to it, I would not have brought it back tonight, okay? The staff put it on the agenda as if it was my idea. Again, it wasn't my idea. We had three members of the council directing, bring this conversation back, whatever. There's not support for it tonight? That's fine, okay? But I've made my point about the fiscal irresponsibility of this council. I stand by it. Councilmember O'Donnell, for the second to last comment.
I don't want to belabor this any further, but I, again, when new information or thought process comes forward in the timeframe, it is not a total disregard or anti-RFP. I'm just not willing to support it right now. And I think I've made that very clear. And I just, I do want to just bring up the point. I mean, if there are seven groups or individuals that have reached out to you, but none of us, and I'm not saying that's happened, but if that has happened, Mayor, I'm not accusing you of anything. I'm not saying there's any backdoor deals, anything shady. I just want to know if there are seven people that genuinely believe that they can make this into what it is without getting an RFP. I mean, there's clearly information that they have that they can share without spending thousands and thousands of dollars on putting a proposal together. I'm open to the conversation. They can call me too. That's all.
Councilmember, seven different organizations have not contacted me. I've been personally contacted by either three or four, let me finish the thought since you asked a question. I've been personally contacted by either three or four different organizations. My understanding from staff is we are at a total that have reached out to staff of seven organizations that wanted to submit a proposal. And I don't know if you're saying this to be serious because you're goading me to continue the conversation, okay? If you actually wanted to hear the information, then we would do an RFP. We would receive the proposals. We would reject all of them because they don't meet our criteria, or we would accept one and we would move on, okay? What happened tonight for the people who just.
I genuinely, my large concern is I genuinely don't believe that if we put out an RFP and then this council decided we didn't want it, that we would just move on. And right now I have a huge hesitation with the access to our city to maintain control over a public entity when we don't need to do it yet.
And by the way, you just interrupted me, and I didn't scream at you that I'm not a child.
I apologize.
No, that's fine. I'm not going to, I'm not going to treat you. I'm not going to, I'm not going to respond in kind, but what I want to say is we're not going to get the information from these seven operators because we're not inviting them to spend the time. I would not, you are in the business of helping other businesses operate, and you understand the time that it takes for experienced finance people to put together meaningful proposals. These people are serious people. They're not going to take the time to do that. They're not going to weigh all the risks, and they're not going to make a serious proposal unless we invite them to do so. So no, I have not spoken to seven different entities. It is my understanding that seven different people, that different organizations have approached. You're asking the question. I'm trying to answer it. And no, I have not had a sit-down meeting with any of them. So, you know, I had a conversation with one of them, and that opened up, and whether that individual is the one who is from Vista, whether that one is the individual who would win or not is irrelevant to me as long as the taxpayers get the best deal, you know? And thank you, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate your point. You know, the ad hominem rhetoric is completely unnecessary. And, you know, it started with Councilmember Contreras. No, it did, accusing me of some backroom deal, which is, you know, which is outrageous and uncollegial. Well, because you're the one that said that we didn't have to have ad hominem attacks and we needed to bring the temperature down. So, I mean, maybe you don't agree with that, but yeah, I think we're done with this item. Does anybody else seek recognition on this item? I'm not going to bring this back up. I've made my point to the people of Vista. Okay. We've already closed the opportunity for oral communications. Yeah, thank you, staff. You know what? I, do we have, do we have lengthy council staff comments tonight? Any comments from staff? Let's queue it up. Let's be here all night. Let's see what you got. Go ahead, Councilmember Fox. I've got a copy of the Holy Bible I'm going to read page by page tonight, so, you know, take your time.
Beautiful. We got till 10:30, so I did attend the North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority meeting. They're looking to potentially move to a future site. We're also doing some new MOUs for, you know, for pain negotiations and all that kind of fun stuff. So that was a great meeting. This Sunday is Fiesta's Patreons over at the Linda Rhodes Rec Center. So make sure you go to that. It's September 14th, Sunday, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and is an absolutely fantastic time. This is the second time they've done the event. I went to the first one last year, and it was awesome. It's Taco Tuesday still, and it's actually a reasonable hour to get tacos still, unlike our normal times when I say that. And I love my wife, Mina, and I thank her for letting me serve on this very passionate council. That'll do.
Councilmember O'Donnell.
I didn't get a chance last time, so congratulations to Councilmember Fox for becoming the new primary at CalCities. I will serve in the alternate role effective, I believe, in January, I think, yeah, just sometime in that timeframe. Yeah, just sometime in that timeframe. I was just elected to serve as the second vice president for the San Diego chapter or for. No, it does not. Had a meeting the other day. I know we're all in a rush to get out of here, so nothing, nothing big. I know that there was some discussion around statewide efforts to make sure that we are mitigating five-foot fire zones. So make sure your house is doing that, so you're protected from any wildfires. In Sina Waste, we had a meeting. There's nothing major to report, just some approvals of some facility upgrades going on there to make sure that our toilets continue flushing and moving smoothly down the pipes. Aside from that, I do appreciate this council. I know we don't always agree, and in fact, it got rather heated tonight, but appreciate the service of all of us to this community, even when we are not in agreeance on things. To my wife, who I know is watching because she has texted me, and I love you very much, honey. Thank you for watching both the boys tonight. I will look forward to seeing you soon. You all have a good night.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yes, thank you to all my colleagues. You know, it's important for us to have these discussions. I hope it wouldn't, you know, always get to this explosive way because I don't think it needs to be like that. If you want to join Guerreras en Acción por un Vista Limpio, yes, they've been doing it for six years, and yes, it's happening again tomorrow, Wednesday. You can contact team captain and founder, Jovita Serafin. She's on Instagram. If you can't reach her, just let me know. I'll get you connected. And I, I haven't had an NCTD meeting. I'm looking forward to going back. But what I can tell you is that NCTD Plus in Vista is completely slaying. Like, we have a ton of folks using NCTD Plus. If you don't know what that is, it is an on-demand shuttle, micro-transit within a geo-fenced area. Because we're only 19 square miles, it's actually relatively big. And for students that have the Youth Opportunity Pass, it is free. And if you want to take more than one person, you guys can do it as a group, and every other person is $1.50 versus the $3. Also, other discounts do apply. Please check it out. It's super awesome. It'll get you to where you need to go. They're also ADA accessible. But thank you to the public for reaching out. I've had a lot of folks reaching out to me recently about a myriad of different things, and we've had good discussions. People are always surprised that I'm willing to meet with them. So if that's you and you think that, hey, I want to meet with a councilmember and learn a little bit more about the city and talk about some issues or some things that I don't agree with, I'm right here. Please reach out, 760-936-6342. I will get to you. We got a queue right now, some folks that I'm gonna be meeting up with. I will be gone for about a week, driving to Oregon to see my cousin get married. So super excited about that. But I'm already taking some reservations for meetings when I come back. So please let me know. I would love to speak with you. I hope everybody has a wonderful night.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you all for your participation in this meeting tonight. Just a few updates. We have a couple of appointments that are resuming and going back into session. Sandag, San Diego Association of Governments will be returning to session this Friday. And then CEA is in session, starting again this month, when we had, for both of those, a break in August. And I just want to say that for anyone who might be struggling with their mental health, that it's OK to take a break. It's OK to ask for help. It's OK to step away and to focus on yourself. Many of us are under a lot of stress, and I think it's important for us as local leaders to model for you what it looks like to stay true to your beliefs while also taking care of your mental. So really just encourage everyone with whatever you're going through right now, don't be afraid to reach out, ask for help if you ever need anything. We have amazing staff and resources at the city that can connect you to services, and I just want to send all my love to everybody tonight.
Thank you very much for that excellent suggestion. Take that seriously. Thank you to my beautiful wife for allowing me to do this. She's watching at home because she's sending me messages. Hope all you have a great night. Thanks for serving the people of Vista. Pay attention, Vista. What happens up here matters.